Ready? Good afternoon, I'd like to call to order the meeting of the School Board of Martin County for Tuesday, April 16th at 4:10. If you can rise or sit as you may for Pastor David Albers, our religious leader.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for having me. Father in Heaven, I was looking at the sign here on character counts about trustworthiness, responsibility, respect, citizenship, caring, and fairness. Boy, those are some great qualities, and I know, Lord, you'd like to instill those in people of wherever they might be. We particularly ask your blessing upon our school board and upon all our staff of Martin County School System and plus the students and their families. We just ask, Lord, that they would learn what character does count. And we pray, Lord, that your blessing to be on the meeting tonight as they discuss various things, just lead and guide them into your kind of wisdom. I pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
And now the pledge, please.
(Inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and I believe we have a student performance from Hidden Oaks Middle School, flute duet. Thank you.
Can we introduce them?
Yes, and I need all the board members to put their mics down and talk into the front of their mics.
Can we introduce them before they leave?
Yes. Where did they go? Come back!
Can you go, can somebody go get them real quick?
Okay.
They don't want to get caught up in things.
Just have them introduced.
Good idea.
You need to be recognized, that was absolutely beautiful. Ms. Monti, do you recognize Ella Glover?
Yes.
And Ella, who's with you?
Can you please come to the microphone and state your names and what grade you're in, please? Thank you.
I'm Audrey Mylan, I'm in eighth grade.
I'm Ella Glover, and I am in eighth grade as well.
Thank you very much for coming and sharing your talents. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies.
Ms. Falls, could you please call roll?
Mrs. Powers?
Here.
Mrs. Stephan-Power?
Present.
Mr. Dieter Lysy?
Here.
Mr. Anderson?
Here.
Mrs. Robert?
Here.
Superintendent Gaylord?
Here. Thank you. At this time, we will approve the agenda with the following items updated: 6.04, 15.04, 18.03, 18.05. We are not updating 19.01, and adding items 5.02, 6.05, 10.01, and 18.07. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as stated?
Motion to approve the agenda with items added 5.02, 6.05, 10.01, 18.07. Updated items 6.04, 15.04, 18.05, and...
18.03.
And 18.03.
With a motion by Mr. Dieter Lysy and a second by Mr. Anderson, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries five zero. The agenda is approved by unanimous vote. Matters identified as items of consent are typically self-explanatory and non-controversial and are not expected to require review or discussion. Board members have reviewed these items and have had an opportunity to have questions answered by staff. As for our policy, 165.1, consent agenda items can be removed from the consent agenda and relocated as action items upon the request of any school board member. The following consent agenda items have been moved per request, 8.01. Are there any additional consent agenda items that a school board member would like removed from the consent agenda for relocation as an action item?
I don't, I polled 8.01, but I had my questions answered this afternoon, so I'm good with that one.
Okay, thank you.
So I move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
Madam Chair, is 6.04 still on the list of our polled items?
No, it's not.
Okay, thank you.
So there's a motion by Mrs. Powers and a second by Mr. Dieter Lysy to approve all the items in five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, and eleven. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? That motion carries unanimously. So that gets us to recognitions, Mrs. Gayner.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Superintendent, and members of the board. I'm Valerie Gayner, the K-12 Science Coordinator, and I have the exciting opportunity to announce our state science finalist. Every year, we go to the State Science Fair, and we had a great showing this year as well. So I want to bring them up and recognize them, but then also we'll have a quick check presentation afterwards because Junior Achievement is here with our Intel Check. So we're very excited about that opportunity. So the first person I'd like to call up is Viraj Singh. Viraj Singh is from South Fork High School. Then Selena Rosen. Can we hold applause until the end if you guys don't mind? No, that's okay, I just figured. And then we have Audrey Miele, the beautiful flute player that was earlier. We have, and she is from Hidden Oaks Middle School. And then we have Giselle Crery, and she is from St. Joe's. And then we have Neera Goyle, and she is from Hidden Oaks Middle School. Steven Vokun, some of our students had other obligations today, so they're not here, but he is from South Fork High School. We have Rohan Jacate, who is from South Fork High School. We also have Varun Lakshmanen from South Fork High School, Matt Nunez from Anderson Middle, and Ayann Latif from South Fork High School.
Everybody up here?
Is everybody?
Do we have everyone? Okay.
I'd like to have the honor of bringing up Claudia Kurt Barto as well from Junior Achievement. Each year, they supply a donation that funds our Intel completely. Our Intel candidate this year is Rohan Jacate. He will be going to Intel in Phoenix, so in May. The last few years, you all have come down for a photo op, so I don't think this year should be any different, but we just love the partnership with the Martin County Schools. And obviously, these are amazing students, but you know that our partnership goes beyond teaching kids about financial literacy, work readiness, and entrepreneurship in all of your schools. And you had JA Champions this year from Jensen Beach High School, the High School Heroes Program for Jensen Beach Elementary. So I just want to recognize these students and our continued partnership. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Congratulations both.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Great job. Congratulations. Great job.
Yeah, so my name's Rohan. My project's all about injecting dissolved oxygen into water. So when I first, when I was reading the news, I found that there's a lot of fish dying in our waters really around the world, and I was wondering why, and I found that because of the blue rain algae and just pollutants in the water, there is absolutely no dissolved oxygen in the water. So I created a solution, basically an autonomous water vehicle that can travel around large water bodies and pump in dissolved oxygen. And so far, what I've found is that it's really effective, and I'm right now a patent pending on it. I'm planning to deploy it in the local waterways very, very soon.
Great.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
Dr. White?
Good evening, Chair Roberts, Superintendent Gaylord, and members of the board. It certainly is an exciting night for academics in the Martin County School District. I'm so proud tonight to present and honor the students for the three academic games. Games. The first one is called Linguistics. It's a play on words for linguistics. Social Studies and Equations. To introduce the members of the team and honor these students, I introduce two of the coaches, Matthew Ray from Crystal Lake Elementary School and Ariane Danin from Stewart Middle School.
Good evening, Mrs. Gaylord and board members. My name is Ariane Danin. I am a teacher at Stewart Middle School. We are going to present the awards for Equations first, excuse me, Linguistic first. Paige Kennard from Crystal Lake Elementary, first, ranking first. Oh, thank you. Yes. Is Paige here this evening? Hi, Paige, how are you? Could you hand those out? Okay. Second ranking is Lucy Mayer from Felix Williams. Third is Sam Vestrum from Crystal Lake. Fourth is Zane Price from Felix Williams. And we had a tie for fifth, that would be Livia Nathan from Bessie Creek and Derek Ott from Felix Williams. Do we have them here? Okay, no problem. And then we have the roll for Equations. We had far more students participating in Equations this year.
Take a picture with the...
Certainly. The next group is Equations. Just to let you know, Equations and Linguistic are both cube-based games, so all the sides of the cubes have different letters or different numbers on them. Based on the roll of the dice and based on the rules that the students pick themselves, they have to create a word sentence or a number sentence that fits those rules and still makes sense, which can be challenging. And these students have all done a fantastic job. Once again, we are doing Equations, and I'm going to go in the correct order this time, from 10th to first. We had a three-way tie for 10th place, Tristan Joines from Crystal Lake, Cole Watkins from JBE, and Brett Tornasi from JBE. And then for ninth place, we had Diana Altshuler from the Pine School. I believe they had a competing event this night, tonight. We had also a three-way tie for eighth place, Sydney Daniel from Felix Williams, Blake Reamer from Jensen Beach Elementary, and Zane Price from Felix Williams. We had a tie for seventh place, Luke Altshuler from the Pine School, and Najah Karake from Pinewood. For sixth place, we had Ross White from Hidden Oaks Middle School. And for fifth place, we had Nina Goyal from Palm City Elementary, not to be confused with her older sister, Neera. And for fourth place, Sebastian Burgess from Felix Williams. A tie for third place between two sisters from the Pine School, Madeline and Charlotte McElroy. And then second place is John Caffrey, also from the Pine School. And first ranking is Aiden Martinez from Palm City Elementary.
And when is the state competition in West Palm Beach?
The state competition was March 2nd in West Palm Beach. It was a Saturday.
Okay.
And we had several winners there as well. Our highest ranked placement was an eighth place placement in Social Studies, and that was Nolan Bennett from Palm City Elementary.
Thank you very much.
Which is exciting. Yes. For Social Studies, we had, let's see, Nolan Bennett, fifth place from Palm City Elementary, Ross White in fourth place from Hidden Oaks, Varun Singh from Pinewood, Alex Otifa from Crystal Lake, and Ben Waltman from Stewart Middle. Yes. And we had a belated entrant from our coaching staff. This is Mr. Boudreaux from Hidden Oaks Middle School. He very valiantly battled the traffic to get here as soon as possible, so thank you. I also have to say a personal congratulations to Rohan Jacate. He is a former academic game student of ours, and we are very excited for him.
Thank you.
We'd also like to recognize in our items of consent, we have a new principal next year for Warfield Elementary, which is Christina Smith. If you could stand and be recognized. Thank you. And moving on to information-only reports, Nicole, what do you have for us?
Good evening, Madam Superintendent, Madam Chair, members of the board. I am happy to once again be reporting the school board news for all three of the high schools in the district. So first, for Jensen Beach High School, the class of 2019 was awarded a total of $510,500 on Scholarship Night, April 8th. Jensen Beach High School set a record this year for eight football players signing to play at the college level. IRSC Career Exploration Day was held on April 12th. Students were able to speak with advisors and current students about available program opportunities. AFJR ROTC has completed an outstanding 2,000 hours of community service so far this school year. Two cadets will be continuing their ROTC careers at the post-secondary level. Forrest Putnam will be attending Texas A&amp;M, and Scott Burton will be attending the U.S. Air Force Academy in the fall. The combined scholarship total for these two students is $400,000. Jensen Beach High School is currently accepting applications for their two brand-new academies. There's the Early Childhood Education and AP Capstone Program. They are excited to welcome these new programs at their campus next year. The band recently traveled to downtown Savannah, Georgia, where they performed on River Street and were able to tour the beautiful historic city. The Spring Band Concert will be Thursday, April 25th at 7:00 PM. Several of the newly-elected Jensen Beach High School key club officers attended the Florida District Leadership Conference in Orlando. Students networked with key club members from all over the state of Florida, caucused, voted in the House of Delegates, attended trainings, award ceremonies, and banquets. Now for Martin County High School, all three Opus choirs brought home gold awards from the national competition in Boston. Within their categories, both Opus Women and Opus Choral received first place, and the Opus Men received third place. This is the first time in school history that the Opus Men ranked at the national competition. Out of the 24 choirs that performed from all over the nation, Opus won the prestigious Choral Sweepstakes Award and an Educator's Award, two of the highest honors. Martin County High School received over $500,000 in scholarships from the community on May 11th. Erica Renzoli won a National Honor Society Scholarship for her volunteer project for the homeless. And Martin County High School will recognize their top students on Awards Night, which is April 29th. Finally, for South Fork High School, Kyrian and Angela Cora will travel to American Heritage School for State Choral MPAs on April 17th. On April 25th, they will receive a historic invitation from a party of British dignitaries to travel to London in December 2020, where they will participate in a comprehensive education program of artistic, historical, and cultural discovery. The Community of Developing Artists hosted the Seventh Annual Hope for Freedom Benefit Concert with performers from South Fork High School, Martin County High School, and community professionals. A total of over $1,000 was raised to aid in the fight against human trafficking. Tough Turf is preparing for their 16th Annual Plant Sale on May 4th, which will include three new vendors and two booths with items made by South Fork's Turf students. Additionally, Tough Turf is meeting with an irrigation architect to begin renovations on the golf course. Sarah Nastari is at the FFA State Officer Screening this week. Also competing this month are the Agriculture Mechanics and Veterinary Science Teams. And finally, upcoming events for South Fork include Scholarship Night on April 23rd, Grad Bash on April 26th, and Prom on May 3rd. Thank you.
Thank you, Nicole.
Bless you.
District update, Tracy Miller.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Superintendent, members of the board. There are just a few weeks left in the regular 60-day legislative session, which ends on May 3rd. School funding, high school graduation requirements, college and career readiness standards, and charter schools are among hot topics. School safety, teacher certification, and preschool programming are also expected to make their way to the governor's desk. House Bill 7055 is on the Education Subcommittee Agenda for today, potentially being discussed literally as we speak. It seeks to address many of these hot topics, including district school board duties, high school graduation requirements, school grade calculations, and industry certifications. The House Education and the Senate Education Appropriations Committees were also scheduled to meet today, hosting their last meetings of the session. And tomorrow, the House will be in session for the full day with 84 bills on their agenda. So as you see and as you know, this time of year is super busy in Tallahassee, lots going on, lots of changes happening as the days progress. At the end of this week, the legislative committees will stop their meetings, and if language does not or has not made it to them by that point and hasn't landed on the Senator-House floors, it's unlikely that those bills will pass. Thank you very much to the members of the board, the superintendent, our members of community, parents, and everyone who has in some way participated in this legislative process. I know there's so much to follow and so much at stake for our students that we greatly appreciate, whether you've traveled to Tallahassee, whether you've called or emailed a legislator and somehow had your voice heard. We appreciate you supporting our schools. And as session comes to an end, we will be prepared to implement whatever new requirements are sent our way, and we'll certainly be supporting our mission of educating all students for success. During the month of April, students are participating in local, state, and national assessments. We have our Progress Monitoring Three assessment, students in K-3 participating this week and into next on the iReady diagnostic. And grades six and seven science are taking their end-of-the-year tests at the end of April. For the state assessments, the Spring FSA/ELA Writing took place on April 2nd, and we have a makeup date coming up in June for students who are either absent or who will enroll between the testing date and that time. And on April 4th, we had students in grades eight through 10 take their writing assessment, and again, a makeup date will be scheduled for those students who might have missed it. The FSAA, which is a Performance Task Assessment, this is an assessment for students with significant cognitive disabilities. They're currently participating in that testing opportunity, and that window closes on April 26th. And finally, we have School Day, non-college reportable assessment for SAT, and this is for students who have not yet met their graduation requirements, and they're seeking a concordant score, and so we wish them all the best and look forward to seeing them across the stage.
Thank you.
Very much.
The internal auditor update was provided. Are there any questions? Mr. George, you have anything? Mrs. Gaylord, Superintendent update?
Okay, so, hot topic for us this past week has been Hepatitis A. There was Senator Gail Harrell called a meeting with local representatives, Brian Mast, and all of our local delegation from the county and city individuals. And to update the board, the Martin County School District Insurance, for people that have the district medical insurance, will be provided the Hepatitis A immunization shot for no cost, and we're working with the prescription shop, and there are several dates. I believe those dates were all sent out to the board, and they were also sent out to all district staff. You know that we have been very proactive in this, and the buses have been cleaned, there's been a cleaning solution that's been applied at schools, on the buses, and so we've been very proactive on that. Also, I think that Nicole forgot to mention a few things in her update, that she was recently recognized as the winner of the Rising Star category for the Serotimus Women of Distinction. So congratulations to Nicole. And she was also part of the second-place team at the Constitutional Center for Constitutional Values, the final round of the Fourth Annual Constitutional Academic Competition that was held yesterday at Stewart Middle School. So that the first-place team was Martin County High School with Gillian Plimal and Jordan Lasardo, and they received a $1,000 scholarship. The second-place team was South Fork High School with Nicole Daly and Jeremy Ortman, and they received $500 scholarships. And the third-place team from Jensen Beach High School was Shay Powers and Emily Sarkar, and they received $250 scholarships. So it's hard to believe that we've actually been, this was our fourth annual competition for the study of the Constitution with the students, and, you know, again, I have to thank Kate Boland and the Center for Constitu- thank Kate Boland and the Center for Constitutional Values in their generosity and providing the awards for the scholarships. And also to Judge Forrest, Judge Klingensmith from the Fourth DCA, Judge Robie from our District Court, and also Judge Steele from our County Court for their time and their continued participation. And, you know, they ask the questions to the students, and then they go back and deliberate for the winners of the competition. So it's awesome that they spend their time with our students, and actually, we're looking forward to some new things for the competition next year with more input from the judges, and that was at their request. So that's been a great, great program for us. Also, we held our Master Board Training last week with Okeechobee County School District and their Superintendent. And at this time, Ms. Falls is hoping to confirm a date for our next training session for Master Board. But as we work together, the team identified some of the behaviors that we believe are important for high-trust leaders, and the four behaviors that were a priority for our team were to demonstrate respect, transparency, clarify expectations, and extend trust. The leadership and culture starts at the top, and we're committed to work together for the vision and mission of the Martin County School District. We've also agreed to a passport of who are we, and the three most important things to the leadership team are, have been decided as success for students, collaboration, and accountability. So we agree to promote a culture of unity and respect that supports lifelong learning. So I think it was a good session, and so we look forward to continuing that. Some important dates for you that will be approaching very quickly. Upcoming, April 23rd at 9:00 a.m., in the County Commission Chambers will be the high school voter trophy presentation. You know they go out and recruit the students and sign them up for voting. Also, April 24th at the Stewart Young Country Club is our ESE luncheon. April 25th is the Book Bowl at the Kane Center. And as we speak, the SPAM Team 180 Robotics Team is getting ready to depart for Houston for that international competition. Also, the Martin County School District is the recipient of a $100,000 award through the Education Foundation, Martin County, from Impact 100 to implement, that's a plays program, and it's to promote language literacy and social skills in our kindergarten students. So it was piloted this year at Hope Sound Elementary. It's been very successful, and we're looking to expand that throughout the entire district. So that's the end of the report. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. The sales tax referendum monthly financials are in your packet. If anybody has any questions on those, as are the Miligent Operations referendum financials. We also have our monthly financial statements. Is there any questions? Any of those? Thank you, Audra. I appreciate the format. Public use of school district facilities. Any questions or comments? Monthly update on the master inter-local agreement. We're a little bit early to start the open to the Board, so we'll go ahead and start with the action agenda items. So 1801.
I move approval of 18.01.
In compliance with Florida Statute 101.39 regarding travel expenses of school board members, where quote "any travel outside the district that exceeds $500 requires prior approval by the district school board, and travel outside the state must include an itemized list detailing all anticipated travel expenses, including but not limited to the anticipated costs of all means of travel, lodging, and subsistence," this agenda item provides the following, the required information. The statute further specifies that the public must have an opportunity to speak on the specific travel agenda item, so public comment will occur prior to any vote on this agenda item. Is there anybody in the public who has anything they'd like to say about school board travel? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Powers and a second by Mrs. Stefanthaler to approve this item. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That carries 5-0. The next item is the Florida School Board Association dues renewal.
I make a motion to approve that item.
Second.
There's a motion by Mrs. Stefanthaler, a second by Mr. Di Terlezi. Is there any Board member who wants to invoke Florida Statute 716.211, paragraph 2? We would need to know that now, so we would adjust the bill accordingly.
No.
Okay. Seeing none, there's a motion by Mrs. Stefanthaler and a second by Mr. Di Terlezi. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That carries 5-0. I'm going to skip your resolution for now and move on to 18.04, requisitions to be approved for purchase orders over $100,000. Are there any questions or comments?
I move approval of 18.04.
I would like to thank Mr. McGinnis and the people at ET for giving us the additional information that they supplied to you all that gives us an accounting of exactly how many computers there are and what age they are and what locations they're at, so we kind of have that in the back of our head. And so thank you for that information, wherever you are. There you are. Thank you. So we have a motion by Mrs. Powers and a second by Mr. Di Terlezi to approve 18.04. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That carries unanimously. We have summer programs from Dr. Miller, 18.05, which includes an extensive list, which includes summer VPK, getting ready for kindergarten, reading camps, library camps, academic challenges, reading challenges, science camps, credit recovery, STEM camps, high school credit recovery with ELL instruction, et cetera. Are there any questions or comments, discussion on any of those?
So I will be abstaining from this item, not that I don't support it, but just because of the VPK funding and my employment.
Okay. So is there a form that?
I have it.
Mrs. Powers has it.
Thank you. So is there a motion to approve this item?
Second.
With a motion by Mr. Anderson and a second by Mr. Di Terlezi, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That carries 4-0, with Mrs. Powers abstaining. I have something weird happening. Hold on a minute. I have something called 1806 that says new agenda item. I'm not sure what that means. I think we're going straight to 18.
It's Personnel Recommendations.
07, which is the added personnel recommendations. I don't believe there is an 18.06. Is that correct?
It's Personnel Recommendations. I don't know.
Okay, so it's either 18.06 or 18.07, whichever one you want, the Personnel Recommendations, it was added to this agenda. Are there any questions, comments?
So there's two updated items? So just, okay, so I will move approval of 18.06 and 18.07, and if there's duplication, then we'll, you'll know, we're not going to hire them twice.
I second that.
Okay. And so there's an addendum to... Right, it's just, there's a weird numbering thing that's happening in here that says 18.06 in some places.
Mine's not empty.
So I had a motion by?
Marsha.
Marsha, and I seconded it.
I have a motion by Mrs. Powers and a second by Mrs. Stefanthaler to approve 18.06 and 18.07.
And then there's an 18.08 on my list.
Yeah, but you really, you really don't have an 18.06.
Okay, all right, so we have 18.07 and 18.08.
There's just an extra number in there.
Okay, so with approval of all personnel?
Yeah.
Okay, got it.
All personnel.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries 5-0.
How we do it? We got 449.
So what was, what did we just start policies?
Well, we approved the two items that were personnel items.
Six and eight, six and seven?
Yes. Yeah, whichever numbers you happen to have.
Yeah, no, it still comes out.
Okay, so what's the Board's pleasure? Do you want to start open to the public before 5:00, or do you want to start working on the first read of policies? Your choice.
I'd say we start on policies.
Okay. So if we can do these policies in numerical order, maybe that would help. This is the first read for these policies. The ones that were included, that looked like they were an update, the 1213, 3213, and 4213, have been removed. We're not doing those now. Those need to be workshopped. So the first one that we do have is policy number 2111, which is parental family involvement. Let me take this out.
So I move approval of 2111.
I second that.
Any comments, changes, et cetera? Motion by Mrs. Powers, a second by Mrs. Stefanthaler to approve 2111, which is parental and family involvement. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That carries unanimously. The second one is 2261. 2261 is Title I Services.
I move approval of 2261.
A motion by Mrs. Powers, a second by Mr. Di Terlezi to approve 2261. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That carries unanimously. The next policy is policy number 2371, which is Hope Scholarships.
I move approval of 2371.
I second that.
I had one slight change down at the bottom on line 41. I don't believe we need the one dot. I think the enumeration starts on the next page in line 43.
Do you want to, what was that again?
So line 41 would not have the one dot. It would just start with the sentence upon receipt of a report of an incident, and then the next things would be the four enumerated pieces on the next page.
Got it.
So we have a motion by Mrs. Powers, a second by Mr. Anderson to approve policy 2371, Hope Scholarships, and send it on to the final read. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That carries unanimously, and opposed? That carries unanimously. The next policy would be 5111.01, which has to do with homeless students. It's nine pages. I had a couple of comments on this. I don't know if anybody else did. Whose is this?
Homeless students.
Would you like to join us? Thank you. Anybody else have any comments on this one?
I'm just opening it up real quick.
Okay.
I don't think I did, but, no.
There's a, there's a minor typographical on line 144 where you don't need the parent in front of the families, but then...
Let's get there.
Okay.
141?
144. Where we're defining families in transition, you don't need that. Got it. And then on page 8, line 301. Yes. I think that needs, we had said at the workshop, that needs to say if the homeless And then I believe in 310, where you start with dispute resolution, you got the paragraphs in the right order, thank you very much, but I think we had asked that you reference the Florida statute. I believe it's 420.621, but I could be wrong. I've been wrong a couple of times this year already, so it might be another time I'm wrong.
I think it was one time last week.
I think, yeah. It's getting more frequent. But if you could add the statute for that, that would be helpful. Any other comments on 5111.01? Is there a motion to approve 5111.01?
So moved.
And a second? I have a motion by Mr. Di Terlezi and a second by Mr. Anderson. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. 5112, entrance requirements. I had a couple of comments, or I had one comment on this one also. Is this yours, Dr. Featherstone?
I will be mine.
This is 5112, which talks about entrance requirements. I'm looking down at paragraph that starts on line 96, which talks about verification And Mr. Anderson, or, Mr. George, if you feel that any of these are substantial and need to throw it back to workshop, if you could let us know.
Yes.
Thank you. I almost hedged you as an attorney there for a minute. Line 97, where you say verification of a parent or guardian's residence, I believe we'd asked that that be legal guardian. Just that there isn't any question on that. And I know we also discussed at the workshop about notification, the parents notifying us in case they moved. Did you want to comment on that? That was going to be included in that.
So what we looked at was following Board Policy 5120, which outlines all of those steps, instead of adding additional language in here, that we would refer them to the Board Policy.
Okay. Any more comments on 5120? 51, 5112. Sorry, I knew it wasn't there.
I was thinking of 5112.
Sorry. Is there a motion to approve 5112?
Second.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Di Terlezi, a second by Mrs. Powers, to approve 5112. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That carries unanimously. And the next one we have is 5610.02, which is in-school discipline.
I move approval of 56 point, well, 5610.02.
Any comments from the Board? I have a motion by Mrs. Powers and a second by Mr. Di Terlezi to approve 5610.02, which is in-school discipline. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That carries unanimously. 7430.01, environmental health program.
I move approval of 7430.01.
Any comments on that? I have a motion by Mrs. Powers, a second by Mr. Di Terlezi to approve policy number 7430.01, environmental health program. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That carries unanimously. 7440, which is plant security. I had a couple of comments on that. Who is?
Mr. Grindel.
Yes.
Just rescinds the policy. Oh, 744001, sorry.
No, yeah.
Yeah, sorry.
In 7440, on the second page, line number 35, we had a sentence that said, "A reward shall be offered for apprehending such persons." I believe at the workshop, we changed that word to "may," so that we weren't required to give a reward. Is that okay with the Board?
Yeah.
I move approval of 7440.
A second.
Are you done?
Yeah.
With that change?
And a second by?
Second.
I have a motion... I have a motion by Mrs. Powers, a second by Mrs. Defenithaler, for 7440, plant security. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That carries unanimously. 7440.01, to delete that policy.
Move approval of 7440.01.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Di Terlezi and a second by Mrs. Powers to delete policy 7440.01. Any comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That carries unanimously. And we're going to stop here and go to open to the public. If there's any member of the public who wishes to speak, you would be submitting a card at this time. Citizen input is vital to the improvement of our district. Most times, your remarks may be listened to without comment from the board members or the superintendent. This does not mean they are heard with any less intensity or concern. Where appropriate, the superintendent and staff will investigate your comments and report back to you and the board with an answer. We thank you for taking the time and having the concern to make our district better. Your presentation to the board should not exceed three minutes. And if you have any handouts, you would be giving those to the deputy who would distribute those to the board. The first person I have is Tim Black.
Thank you for letting me speak to you, Madam Chair and Superintendent and Mr. George and board members. I'm wrestling through my books here. Abraham Lincoln only got three minutes at Gettysburg, and he did a pretty good job of changing the Constitution of the United States. I'm not as erudite as Mr. Lincoln was, and I'm already down to 238, so... But I have written... I've been writing... Some of you guys know I've been selling stuff for 43 years, some of the good, some of the bad, you know, a lot of things for hire. So I've published magazine and newspaper articles all over the world. And I retired early in 2004 so I could write a memoir about my daughter, Taylor Black, who died of brain cancer. And that book was successful, and it led to me writing other books for this publisher. And we decided to do a series of books. And it's serendipitous when you talk about the Constitution, because that's what I'm dealing with, okay? As you might know, the College Board has basically said the two most important things that students can learn today are computers and the Constitution. I'm absolutely useless when it comes to computers, but I'm pretty good with the other stuff. And it's funny, too. I was looking... I taught Tony's brother in AP. I taught your brother in dual enrollment, and I've taught some powers before, so, you know, it's just you've been here long enough to teach everybody's kids. So the first book, and each one of these books, I'll just... There's actually four in the series. The fourth one comes out in September. The first one deals with the... Okay, let's just go back to Lincoln and the Gettysburg address real quickly. He said fourscore and seven years ago. Okay, if anybody can do the math there, that's 87. Take that away from 1863, which is the year he did his thing, and you get 1776. So he's referring to the Declaration of Independence. So the way I wrote these books, this seems like it's out of order, but I started with the revolution. Oops. And I started with the revolution, and then I went to the Civil War at Gettysburg because, frankly, I went to Gettysburg College, and since I did a lousy paper for my Civil War instructor, I figured I owed him something. Unfortunately, he's dead. But... And then Jamestown is on the start of colonies in the United States. Now, these are actually Tesla's time travelers has been used in Martin County High School at Murray. And I did a program over Anderson Middle School, trying to hawk the book. So what I'm suggesting is, it's serendipitous what you said, Madam Chair or Mrs. Gaylord, because I've actually written these books to deal with constitutional issues. And can I have another minute?
Just quickly, just your...
Oh, yeah, I know. We've got a lot of people talking. Anyway, so what I've done is I gave Dr. Miller some of the books, and she's going to share them with patient Shufa over at Oaks. But I like to, you know, kind of promote these as summer school, you know, summer reading classes. And I can tell you, if the kids read all four of the books over four years, their AP scores will go up tremendously. And I started the AP program here in County. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Black.
Thank you.
Artie Hammond?
You did pretty good.
Superintendent, Madam Chair, and school board members, I'm Artie Hammond, a Realtor with Artie Hammond Real Estate Team at Keller Williams and a proud board member of the Education Foundation of Martin County. Thank you for providing this opportunity to address you this evening. On behalf of the Education Foundation of Martin County, I'd like to share a few notes on upcoming events and recent education foundation programming. School board members, please mark your calendars and save the date. The Education Foundation of Martin County Elementary Book Bowl is scheduled for Thursday, April 25th, from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at the Kane Center in Stewart. 150 3rd, 4th, and 5th graders will be matching wits in a game-style showdown of this year's Sunshine State Young Readers Award titles. School teams will go head-to-head, answering questions from 15 titles. It's a wonderful event promoting the love of reading, and it wouldn't be possible without our sponsors. Wallace Hyundai, Lori J. Gaylord, Dr. and Mrs. Nathaniel Hill, Willoughby Book Club, Rocky Point Estates, Crystal Lake Elementary PTA, Jensen Beach Elementary PTA, Diagnostic Radiology Centers, Janine Webster, Seawind Elementary PTSA, Day Agency, Naomi Cohen, and ABC Adoption, and me, and a few very important anonymous donors. If you'd like to attend these, please let us know. Parking is limited, and we are issuing parking passes. Here's another save the date. Next Wednesday, April 24th, the Education Foundation of Martin County will be participating in the Great Give. This is a 24-hour online giving event and is designed to raise funds for Martin County nonprofits. Mark your calendar so you remember to go online and make your donation. All donors will be able to vote for the school of their choice for our next round of grant funding. Schools will have the opportunity to win $5,000, $3,000, or $1,500 grant focusing on literacy, STEAM, or school safety. STEAM is science, technology, engineering, and arts and math. Please remember to visit greatgiveflorida.org. I got two more paragraphs. I'll go quick. Make your donation next Wednesday, April 24th. That's greatgiveflorida.org. It's that time of the year again. Lisa gave me all this to read. Teachers are in the process of nominating their Teacher of the Year candidates. The Education Foundation of Martin County will host its annual Education Foundation of Martin County Teacher of the Year orientation on Monday, May 15th, from 4:30 to 6:30 at the Dolphin Bar and Shrimp House. You don't want to miss this one. The superintendent and all the school board members are invited to attend. Please give us a call to congratulate next year's...
Thank you very much.
Oh, my gosh, this is the most important paragraph. Please. Okay. Finally, we'd like to have some exciting news. Last Thursday, the Education Foundation of Martin County received the IMPACT 100 Martin, $100,000 grant. So you didn't want to miss this one. $100,000 grant to expand EFMC PLACE across the district. PLACE is an acronym for Purposeful Language Acquisition Yield Success. The highly successful project was originally piloted in kindergarten classrooms at Hope Sound Elementary with the help of Hope Sound Community Chest. It has since been implemented in all kindergarten classrooms. Thanks to IMPACT 100, all teachers and kindergarten students will benefit. I thank you for your time and your continued support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have Erica Donalds. And I... And James Taylor, is that correct?
Thank you.
Okay. Is he going to play the guitar?
Is he going to sing?
I think he is.
Not tonight.
Hi, good afternoon, Superintendent, board members. Erica Donalds from Treasure Coast Classical Academy. I have James Taylor here from Kim Lee Horn and Associates, who's a traffic engineer. I provided you by email earlier today with kind of a mini traffic study memorandum, which I'll let James explain regarding our temporary facility on 34th Street. You'll have a copy of the presentation here as well, and I'll just allow James to go over that and answer any questions that you might have.
Good evening. For the record, James Taylor with Kim Lee Horn and Associates. And this PowerPoint was basically put together as a summary of a traffic study that we did for the charter school applicant. I am a registered professional engineer licensed in the state of Florida, and we understand from the Resolution 18.03 before you tonight that there's some concerns about traffic on 34th Street with regard to Palm City Elementary operating in close proximity to the temporary site for the Treasure Coast Classical. So what we did is we put together a quick traffic study, and again, this is a summary. The site location is shown in blue. We took a look at the driveways at the temporary site as well as the intersection at MAP Road. And the way that the temporary site would operate, 765 students is a conservative estimate for how many students the temporary site would serve. I'm told by Erica that that would probably be much less. The peak hour of operation for the Treasure Coast Academy would be between 7:45 and 8:45. This is outside of the period when the Palm City Elementary School operates, and that occurs between 7:00 and 7:45. There will be a two-stage drop-off and pickup operation, and this is to reduce the intensity of the impact so that everybody isn't showing up all at once on 34th Street. The traffic control officer that currently directs traffic at MAP Road would be present through the operation of the charter school after the Palm City peak hour is over. The staff at the site is fully trained on day one for procedures. They're a very efficient and safe group. I've seen it in action at many larger schools, even as many as four lanes of drop-off. And there's continuous communication between the schools and parents, so if operations need to change at some point, they have that back and forth to make those adjustments. There's no activities after 6:00 p.m. or on the weekends, and any events, any special events that do occur, like a meet the teacher, would be scheduled to not conflict with the Palm City Elementary site. So as part of the study, the traffic counts were conducted between 7:00 a.m. and 9:00 a.m. Why the a.m.? Because that's the peak hour generator for the site as well as the peak hour of the background traffic. And then those trips that are projected from the school, they were derived coming from industry standards, and then those trips were signed to the roadway network for existing traffic patterns. And then we took those trips, added it on top of the build-out conditions, that background traffic, to determine the delay and the level of service at the driveways and at the MAP Road intersection during that peak hour. And then we also did an onsite vehicle stacking analysis. And I can see Erica's time's over. She yielded some of that, so if we could...
We don't yield, but continue. I know that between the two of you...
We're here together as one.
And then we also conducted a driveway turn lanes need assessment. This is what the site can contain on site, a maximum stacking of up to 62 vehicles. And that's important because we need that capacity to keep traffic from spilling onto 34th Street. The conclusions of the report, between 7:00 and 7:45, the traffic volumes on 34th Street are about 400 trips per hour. And with that traffic officer in place at MAP Road, the intersection operates pretty well at a reasonable level of service. At about 7:45, traffic volumes drop off dramatically, down to about 100... Actually, it was 66, so we're talking about a vehicle per minute on the road after that point. So from 400 down to 66 without the project in place. With build-out conditions, after you add the charter school traffic, and assuming that that first bell occurs at 7:00 a.m. or later, once Palm City School, Palm City Elementary is off of the road...
8:00 a.m.
8:00 a.m., if I said otherwise, 8:00 a.m. or later for that first bell. Then that peak period of the charter school occurs outside of the operations of the elementary school. With that two-stage drop-off and pickup operation, and staggered about 30 minutes apart, the charter school traffic queues can be accommodated on-site. Those 62 vehicles will be enough storage to add a clue, make sure that traffic doesn't spill into the 34th. And then the intersection of MAP Road is anticipated to continue operating at that existing acceptable LOS at the intersection with the officer in place. He would have to be out there longer than he is now to get through the charter school operations. The driveways are anticipated to operate without a need for turn lanes, and that's due to that low background traffic. There's not much traffic that they need to pause for to enter the site. And we'll be available for questions if any comes up while you consider a resolution tonight, and I appreciate your time.
If I could just add one thing, we are talking about 84 school days. That's how many days that our students will be at the temporary site, 84 days. And we have certainly, as a school, gone above and beyond to... We didn't have to do a traffic study, but we want to make sure that everyone is comfortable, and we want to be comfortable with the safety of all students, not just our students, but the community as well. We've been working closely with the Sheriff's Office to ensure the safety of the temporary facility, the traffic, and our students as well, the students of Palm City Elementary. So we want to be good neighbors for the 84 days that we're operating our school at this temporary location, and certainly as we move on to our permanent location as well. And I think that we've been able to demonstrate that. If there's any other suggestions that the board has that we can do to make everyone feel comfortable and ensure that things are operating efficiently and safely for everyone, we'll be happy to do that. I would just ask respectfully that the board not consider passing this resolution without considering all of the data that's been put forth by the experts. Thank you.
Thank you. And you're within your two, three-minute periods. I appreciate that.
We're going to ask questions later.
If you have a question, now would be the time to ask it because we won't be doing it while we discuss, and they know that, that when we get to our business portion of the meeting, it is between us and staff.
Thank you.
So if you have a question, go ahead and ask it.
You... You're... I looked at your times, and although it may not appear that there's some conflict with Palm City Elementary, as a parent who used to drop my kids off at school, I always tended to get there extra early so I didn't have to wait on long lines. And we have some seriously long lines at Palm City Elementary. So I'm wondering if you mentioned in here somewhere that you would start at a certain time or later. Would you be able to adjust that beginning, that starting time to 8:30 from 8:00, which would give you an extra half hour for stacking, and it'll give us a little distance between the times that we start and you start?
The concern that we have with that is that the traffic study also recommends that we have staggered start times so that we split our student body in half and start a half an hour apart. So if the first time was not until 8:30, then the second time would have to be at 9:00, which is pretty late for our parents, as you can understand. So what we've committed to, and we're just now getting on to the site and starting to plan the logistics of it, but that our first start time will be no earlier than 8:00, as was recommended by the traffic study, and that we would split the student body in two and have the second wave start 30 minutes later. So that maybe 8:00, it may be 8:10, 8:15, 8:30 is a little late because if we do the other half 30 minutes later, it would be getting close to 9:00.
The later you could would be much better off for us all. So, you know, even if it was 8:15, gives us 15 extra minutes, I would really like to see that happen for Palm City 34th Street property owners that live there and have to deal with this traffic on a daily basis and fix it to get worse, so...
I understand. Thank you.
And perhaps it might be appropriate, as you start and you have your staggered two times, if you notice that it's building up, that you bump those people to the second time.
Right.
And then you could do that. Madam Superintendent, you have something?
Right. I think our biggest concern is the start time because I'm at schools a lot, and I see students coming in late. So I guess my concern would be for those students that would be trying to get into Palm City Elementary that are running a few minutes behind their schedule, they're going to get into your traffic of your parents that get there early. So then they'll be even later if they're into your traffic. And so that's why I think the... I think it's great that you're doing a staggered start because that will help alleviate some of the traffic, but also that window of time is important to us as well as to you.
That also goes along...
And the residents on 34th Street.
That also goes along with parents who are trying to get to school during that time for a parent-teacher conference because the way teachers' planning works, you might have fifth grade there first thing in the morning, and so they have to get to the school in order to get to the conference. If they can't get to the conference on time, it limits the time that they can talk to teachers. The other thing I want to ask is, it's all about starting times, but I don't see any dismissal times.
The reason... Oh, I can let you speak.
So just to back up a little bit about the data on... So just to back up a little bit about the data on the roadway out there today, we're showing that very pronounced period happening for Palm City between 7:00 and 7:45. And the, in the period between 7:30 and 7:45, it really is eastbound traffic. These are traffic already leaving as, you know, this next wave would happen if that helps alleviate any of that concern. As far as why the AM versus the PM, so we do these all over the state of Florida, we do these studies, so we're very familiar with how the operations occur. And what we've found is it's redundant to show the PM and the reason being, the peak hour of generation is the AM. The after-care program is a lot more well-attended than the before-care. So there's just this intense peak hour in the AM that you don't see in the PM. And the other reason why is because the AM background traffic, so this is the non-school trips, is much higher in the AM because you can imagine in the PM, not a lot of people are on the road other than the school trips, you know, between 2:00 and 4:00 PM, a lot of commuters are still at work.
Well, just to let you know, as a former principal of one of the Palm City Schools, not this but Palm City School, parents put their kids on the bus in the morning, but most of the time, they wanted to pick them up in the afternoon. So that's actually when the line was very long and really would kind of trap the neighborhood residents in because it kind of, we had to make sure that we left openings where my school was located. So it, there may be a difference in time and that's why I'm asking that question.
I'll just mention also that our dismissal time is 3:00 for all students, which is already over an hour difference with the dismissal time for Palm City. So I don't think that there's that much of a concern as there is in the morning when it's close together.
Okay. And then the other thing is when, I'm, I'm not the best map person, but when I'm looking at the chart, you said you were doubling up cars to come in. Is, is this what, are you showing 34th Street here?
It's at the top.
Where are the cars at?
That's 34th.
Okay, so where are the cars?
That's the cars.
Okay. So when the cars come in, they're doubled up outside your portables? Is that where they're doubled up?
Correct. That would, that would be one, one alternative to dropping off the students. They would come in, double stack towards the end and then, you know, depending on how they operate, eight to 12 cars would, would, their students would exit the vehicle all at once-
Okay.
While staff made sure that nobody was moving. It's really cool when you see these at four lanes. It's, it's very well done. And then once everybody's door is shut and they're ready to go, they move out, the next wave comes in. So you can see the traffic cones kind of directing the two lanes into one. And then what we found with the delay, there's almost no delay on 34th Street, so those cars are pretty free to go at that time when nobody else is on the road.
Okay, thank you. Any more questions? We good? Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
I think we're good. Todd Lucas. And Mr. Lucas, I'm gonna have to ask you after you speak if you can fill out your name and address. Or yeah, I got your name, I don't have your address on here.
Yeah, and I was here, I think, to allow additional time for the conversation on the, of the school and the traffic, but I think it's been addressed in the amount of time that was needed.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Heather Rogers. Nice smiley face on your phone.
Good evening. I usually come before you putting your feet to the fire about educational matters that are near and dear to my heart. Today, I want to talk to my constituents, parents. Each day, there are numerous headlines letting parents know we have all of these choices when it comes to our children's education. I believe every parent should evaluate their child's school needs each year. As an electorate, we did not vote for vouchers or charter schools to come and derail the public education system. If you don't believe me, Google Michigan plus charter schools. But I stand before you today asking all parents not to throw in the towel on public education. I am asking that you get to know your child's teacher. When you get that envelope with their report card, request a conference, even if they are doing well. Ask the teacher what your child needs to be more successful. If you aren't loving what's going on in your child's school, give the teachers and administrators an opportunity to know what's bothering you and come with suggestions and solutions. Parenting is a team sport and all of you in this district are part of that team. It's up to you to decide if you're a bench warmer or you're aggressively going for the goal. My daughter will be a student at Anderson Middle School next year. Our family can't wait to join the Anderson family. I reached out to Mr. Aiken on a weekend with a long list of neurotic questions. Guess what? He answered every last one of them that day. It was a Saturday afternoon. He followed up with an invitation to visit Anderson. We also had an issue with our elementary promotion ceremony. I reached out to Ms. Radcliffe and our district's head of security and we were all able to brainstorm and work on a plan to meet all of our needs. That's teamwork at its finest. My takeaway message for all of you is if you think this charter school sounds like a good idea, do your job as a parent and ask how have you helped at your child's school? To quote a retired principal friend of mine, "This is a race between charter and public schools." The legislation over the last five years has unfairly burdened public schools to the point that they now have to run the race with a 100-pound bag of potatoes on their backs. Those weights and/or sacks of potatoes would be legislators, House bills, lame board members, and a lack of parental support. As we close out this school year, I ask for you to figure out how you can get some of those potatoes off our teachers' backs and administrators. We need to start the 2019-2020 school year light and fast. Board members, if you are sitting here biding your time and not actively fighting for your constituents, I ask you tie up your cleats and join the game. You need to be an engaged board member. Get in the game. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mary Slaven. Fries, Bryce, Fries.
Good afternoon. Here I am again. I'm Mary Slaven. I'm an IPS coach at Hope Sound Elementary. I'm here today to discuss the upcoming proposed changes to the elementary IPS coaching positions next school year. We were told at our last IPS coach meeting that our job titles might be changing to the title of ESE specialist and that's great. The title of IPS coach never truly fit what we do on a daily basis and I thank you if that change is approved. But we were also told that due to funding, the elementary IPS coaches will more than likely be considered a .5 or halftime position next year. So we will either be split between two schools or we will spend half a day as an IPS coach and half a day as an ESE teacher working in the classrooms with students. Nine years ago, I don't believe any of you were sitting on the board, but I believe Mrs. Gaylord was a board member, they tried this. Then they split the IPS coaches throughout the county. It was disastrous at best and they went back to the one-to-one IPS coaches at schools the next year. In order to help make the splitting of the positions easier next year, it's probably going to be proposed that the speech-language pathologists take over as LEA for the ESE paperwork and meetings for speech-impaired-only students. By doing this, the SLP will then have to schedule the meetings, facilitate the meetings, sign as the LEA, conduct three-year reevaluations, create extended school-year packets, hold dismissals, complete and turn in the data entry forms, make copies of paperwork for parents, scan and email the completed eligibility's and reavows for the ESE District Office, scan and upload the paperwork into Peer and Focus, create the reavowed referral packets for speech-only students who are being evaluated for any additional programs and services as well as maintain and grooming the ESE folders for any audits which may occur. From what I'm gathering, they will be expected to do all of this additional work while maintaining their current caseloads and no additional time to get this extra work done. I love my job. I truly love what I do every day. And it makes me emotional to even talk about my kids and what I do. But I am tired and I am bone-tired and weary of continually fighting for our position to be recognized as having some importance. Elementary IPS may not have the roster numbers as high school, but our role is vital in our school community for laying the foundation of eligibility and services for our ESE students. I always say at meetings for our students, I don't look at that adorable little boy or girl receiving services for the first time. I see a young man and a woman walking across the stage and getting a diploma and how am I gonna start getting them there? I deserve a little bit of extra time after all the other ones. Thank you. Elementary IPS coaches are as important as middle school IPS coaches who are as important as high school IPS coaches. We all carry an equal load, a different load but equal. Please consider keeping all the elementary IPS coaches full-time at each school and finding the funding somewhere to add additional coaches at the high school levels because they are breaking with the weight of their load as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Fries? Thank you, I'm sorry, I-
That's okay. Dear Martin County School Board, my husband and I have five children. Each one of our children is unique and different. We have had our children in public school, private school, Catholic school, homeschool, Florida Virtual School, and now for the upcoming school year, we have our youngest daughter enrolled at TCCA. We are looking forward to this new school choice for her. It takes many different types of schools to best suit the needs of our unique children today. We are blessed to live in the United States of America where we can pick what is right for our children. TCCA will ultimately be located on Cove Road and Stewart. Our school's temporary location from August till Christmas break will be in Palm City at the Cross Church Building. The parents choosing to send their children to TCCA all want and are excited for their children to be at the school's permanent location. However, it's going to take a bit of time for that to come to pass. Until then, we will be neighbors with PCE. The school's staggered start and end times will make traffic easier for the children and families of PCE. TCCA wants, as do the many parents who have chosen to enroll their children, to be good, kind, and friendly neighbors to the parents, children, families, and school staff of PCE. If both sides can work together for a few months, so much good can come out of this situation. Just as TCCA may not be right for your family and public school might be perfect, it can be the complete opposite for other families. Not all children are alike. Not all schools are alike. What's good for one may not be good for the next. Let's put our differences aside and how about both schools and parents coming together for the benefit of the children? If public school works well for your child, that's awesome. If a charter school works well for a different child for different reasons, that's great. Let's lift our kids and families up. Let's all want great things for all our kids, no matter where they attend school. Let's put our differences aside, share 34th Street, make new friends, and help each other out. What a wonderful example it would be for all our children. TCCA will also be doing some wonderful improvements to the Cross Church, which will be a win-win for the neighborhood and the neighbors of the church. The parents of TCCA will also be helping by having work get-togethers to help with the landscaping of the outside of the church and to clean up the property. I think you will find us great neighbors with car pools to ease traffic and congestion. I'm asking you, the school board members, to put this topic away and let our children learn and grow in the environment that suits them best, where they can be educated in the style and curriculum that their parents have chosen for them. I pray that all the children of Martin County can be able to attend the school that works best for their individual and unique needs. Thank you for your time and letting me share my voice with you today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tina McSully.
So I have like 10 people who ceded their time to me, so I'm gonna take like 30 minutes. Okay. Totally kidding. So I have a speech and I'm not even going to read it. I was at the commission meeting this week, over 700 students and TCCA themselves said there are no buses because their parents don't need buses. We won't talk about segregation issues, we'll just talk about the fact that not one parent at TCCA needs transportation to the school, so they're going to carpool. I'm looking at 700-plus cars because I know parents and I know they don't really like to carpool, it doesn't work out for very long. But no one who's come up here and spoke has said one word about the safety of my daughter. So I could stand here for one minute and not say a word because most of you up there and most of the district officials and most of the county commissioners and most of growth management, you know what answer they give me when I say, "How are you getting emergency vehicles up 34th?" You know what they tell me? "We'll go around." Should I stand here for a minute and a half and tell you how long a round is when my child is choking or when there's been a school shooting or when there's a gas leak like we had at Anderson last year? Did you see the, the cafe that blew up in North Carolina this week? You cannot put those children in danger. Staggered car lines, not-staggered car lines, none of that matters. That road is impassable. And now we can talk about Stoneman Douglas. And I know, Marshall, you sat on that commission, so you've heard far more than anyone else has heard, but this school district and every school district in this state was required to do vulnerability studies on every school that are sealed. And I can almost guarantee you, and I don't know much about being a school board member, but I can almost guarantee you that that vulnerability study at Palm City Elementary said accessibility. And for you to start talking about agreements over how we can make this work, you are putting my child in danger and you're putting every child at Palm City Elementary in danger because it is unacceptable for you or anyone in this community to tell emergency vehicles to go around, ever. And I want to know where the sheriff is and where, I'd like a statement from Frank, I'd like a statement from the fire chief, I'd like a statement from every emergency management company in this county and if they will write formal letters, which I requested publicly, stating that this is not going to create a danger for children, then I will say, "Welcome to the neighborhood and we can all be friends," kumbaya. But my child is worth more than that and you are here to protect every child in this district and not worry about lawsuits because I can guarantee you, if something happens to my child, I will be the first one getting a lawyer. Because you've had the warning, you know how many kids are there, you know what 34th Street looks like. Traffic studies, come on. It's utterly ridiculous. And I expect you to do the right thing. Stop being afraid of every single political thing that happens in this county and do the right thing for these kids.
Say it again. She didn't hear you.
Say it again, we didn't hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Danielle Lopez. Thank you. Sorry.
My name's Danielle Lopes. That's okay.
Sorry.
It's always confusion. I want to thank you for having the opportunity to come up here and speak to you and to have this resolution. I have a student at PCE. Tina did an amazing job and she probably hit all of my major points. I, and Mr. Tarozelli, I mean, you hit it too, that car line lasts long. And if another school on that street, I mean, you're talking about a dead-ended residential road, okay? It was probably fine when PCE was originally built 60 years ago. PCE itself has probably grown too big for that road. Now you're putting another size, a similar-sized school on the same road? That's outrageous. Look at your other schools in this county, similar-sized schools, 1,300 kids, 11, or 1,000 kids, they're on double-lane roads. You can have access from either direction. You are talking about one dead-ended road that is one lane in and one lane out. I, when we moved to Palm City Elementary, I dropped my kids off every day. My daughter, who no longer is there, she's moved on to Hidden Oaks, she has type 1 diabetes. So I didn't feel comfortable sending her on a school bus. I witnessed a fire truck try to get down 34th Streets or in PCE's car line. It took them 15 minutes. My son, who is at PCE right now, he has a severe nut allergy. An EpiPen only gives you 15 minutes before more medical intervention is needed. So yes, I'm relying on him to keep himself safe. I then, his backup is the staff at PCE to give him, to recognize anaphylaxis and give him an EpiPen shot, but I'm, more importantly, I'm relying on first responders to get to him before he dies. His allergist just told me, unrelated to this, but a month ago, two months ago, we had a new allergy test done. It's the worst number she's ever seen. So like, I cannot imagine how anyone can think this is a good idea. 1,300 students on one tiny road? That's insane. I mean, I think we can all recognize that, just as human beings. I, I just, it blows my-
Thank you, Danielle. Carol Saki?
I had a whole thing written here, I'm probably gonna come off of most of it over this. My name is Carol Saki and I wanted to come here this afternoon and use my three minutes to praise the team at Hidden Oaks and talk about the amazing year my child has had. Unfortunately, I'm going in another direction. I'm concerned. In January, I came before you and asked you to be proactive about the Milletgen sales tax referendums. To please make sure we were out front and communicating with the community and that we did, with the community that did something that they've never done, which is approve not one but two sales tax, two tax increases within three months of each other. Well, as I feared and predicted, you have an optics problem right now and there are groups looking to exploit poor communication and lack of transparency. Social media might not be for you, but I can tell you, it's preferred communication for too many people and you're taking a beating in that forum. You rolled out the new purchase of the admin building with quotes like it's gonna streamline operations, which is true, but when people just approve taxes for neglected schools, that's an optics problem. The money is separate from the sales tax, I know that, but those articles should have had quotes explaining that. Plus, the current cost of $80,000 portables, the unhealthy and dangerous work conditions of this building, and the exorbitant cost of remedy. The voters and residents need to hear from you about what you will be saving the district with that move. Instead, the voters are commenting that they did not vote for admin offices, they voted for schools. It's a major PR problem and it was quite avoidable. We shouldn't be rolling out with this after we just got the tax money. This is just a bad first step. While we're talking about the local referendum money, our state legislature, legislature has got their opportunistic hands on ours and for that, I'm outraged and so should you be. They did not have the political will to ask voters for more tax money, but now they're coming for ours. Locally raised, not okay. Aside from Dr. Miller today, I've heard nothing from the district about the damaging bills on the horizon from Tallahassee. Our governors made numerous live news conferences over the past few months, every one of them from a private or charter school. The writing is on the wall for public education. Why aren't we communicating all the damage that will be inflicted with these bills so packed with poison for public schools? Vouchers, redistribution of local referendum money, guardian programs, and taking our local control through term limits of all of you and the other shenanigans they've got going? It's past time for every member who sits on a public school board to fight for public schools. It is not time to circle the wagons and sit silent when party counterparts put another nail in our coffin. Every elected state seat in this county is Republican, as are all the seats occupied on that dais. In the words of J.K. Rowling through the character Albus Dumbledore, "It takes a great deal of courage to stand up to your enemies and a great deal more to stand up to your friends." This is happening on your watch and now is the time for you to stand up for the true 19,000 public school families of Martin County.
And I have Valerie Valati.
Good afternoon, I'm Valerie Balleid.
Balleid, sorry.
That's okay. Everyone gets that wrong. I also have a child at Palm City Elementary. I don't think I'm gonna take the whole minute, three minutes. This is not about not working together with TCCA. Everyone should have choices. But I think this is about giving PCE a choice too. I think what we're here basically is about our safety and I know there's two other moms and teachers here that talked about that. 85 days is what I heard is all you guys want. 85 days is a long time for children to be safe. We want to make sure they are safe. If the charter school was in the back, in the back of 34th, I think they would be that family sitting here saying they don't want Palm City Elementary in the front of MAP. I think they would be just as concerned that their kids would be the kids that wouldn't have the ability to get those safety vehicles to them, but I think because they're the ones that would be getting that safety first, we're the ones in the back saying, "Please, please look out for the kids there. We need to hear, you need to hear our voices and give us this choice too." Because it doesn't sound like PCE is getting a choice. It sounds like they're, that TCCA, am I saying that right? Is just asking that they could come in and we're not able to say if we want them or not. And that doesn't sound like we're, we're getting our fair share. And that's a lot of kids back there. And again, we are just repeating, but safety is big and we've been hearing about kids' safety ever since Stoneman, ever since the schools have been forcing upon us how important it is to keep our kids safe. I mean, the safety of the roads, the buses, and now this, putting those safety vehicles around the corner, that is, I don't know, two, three extra minutes? Have we looked at another location for 85 days? Has anyone looked for another location? What about the neighborhood that's also back there? Has anyone addressed what happens to those people? How do the emergency vehicles get to them? It's not just our school, there are other people involved that live in the back. Again, 85 days or 84 days is a long time to put people at risk, but it's not that long for you guys to find another temporary place to put the kids for school. Someone else could have my 15 seconds.
Is there anybody else who has something they'd like to say during Open to the Public? Now would be the time to turn in your slip and say it.
We need a break.
Lori Prim?
I'm changing what I'm saying.
Peg Not?
Yes, thank you. As many years ago, I was head coordinator, one of them, Sue, Sarah and I, for Palm City Elementary, dear to my heart. My question is kind of logical. I sat here in a board meeting with everybody all worried about too many parents in a lunchroom at a school and everything had to change because it was all confused and we didn't want to have a problem because of security issues. And of course, I'm definitely big on security, that's my number one for the students. Now I'm sitting here listening to how long it's gonna take to get emergency vehicles to Palm City Elementary. The concern of me, and I know there's medical concerns and things of that nature, but we must remember there's other concerns now which we all do not really want to face. We now have to consider if something terrible happens on that campus, like Parkland. How fast can our sheriff's department get in there? The burden on the sheriff's department right now is very heavy. They are good at what they do, they know what they do, and when they get there, they do the job, but they can't do the job if they can't get there. So I'm trying to use a little logic in this situation. You can't ask people to do the impossible. I'm saying, as a safety measure, in extraordinary circumstances, which we all hope never happens, happens, and occurs, who's sitting here would want to say, "Oops, I guess we made a mistake." Because if it's so, if it's so important in a cafeteria in a school where parents take advantage of a situation, maybe not knowing, I don't even know what happened actually, or maybe they didn't, but we have to be very safe, so parents now have to take their kids outside and eat at a bench, or however it ended up, I don't know. What, what is this time lapse that we're allowing to happen? I don't know. I don't know the answer. I just know that the safety and security of the children under your watch is Palm City Elementary. End of story, end of chapter, end of book. That's your baby. And if we cannot get sheriff's department in there when they need to be, in a time lapse that they have, you're not only shortchanging the sheriff's department, putting them in a bad situation, let alone what could possibly happen on the campus. So something has to be done to make sure that they can get there when they need to get there and not put a roadblock in their way of any kind whatsoever. I'm not belittling medical issues, I'm just taking it a step further. And like I said, as volunteer coordinator for the school under Frank Brubin, I love the school. I'm not against what, any education at any level, but we must put our own first.
Thank you. Good afternoon. I really did not have anything prepared to say today because you all know how I feel about this entire issue and have heard me talk about it ad nauseam. So I was really gonna just come today to please urge each of you and anybody who will hear this to call Senator Gail Harrell tonight and really by tomorrow morning at 10 o'clock. They're voting on SB 7030, which includes arming teachers. And while Martin County Board has said that we will not do that in this district, which is great, it's becoming a Florida law if this goes through for a voluntary program throughout the state. And so we need to exclude that portion of that bill with an amendment to 730. So please, everybody call Gail Harrell and let her know that we do not think teachers should be armed, Ms. Powers. So anyway, but I would like to reiterate what other people have spoken to today because I do feel so strongly about it and think they made some great points that need to be heard. Just like Mary Slavin is always talking about that funding issue and those positions and I absolutely agree with her. And then, you know, I think about, well, she's asking for funding, where is that funding gonna, gonna come from? So people really need to understand that it's not that the board doesn't want that position to be paid well or added, it's that there's no money for this and it's all because of what Heather Rogers and Carol and other people spoke to about the legislation coming down that's gutting our funding to feed these charter schools and everything else. This is the plan, starve, starve, starve us and feed, feed, feed them. I want to support the Palm City Elementary parents that came out today to speak about their concerns about their children's safety and I absolutely agree with them. I have my own beef on Cove Road because that's where I live. I would like to encourage everybody to continue to come and speak out at all meetings because when we just come, when something just affects us, you know, if we support each other, we can just be stronger throughout the school year regarding everything for all of our public schools and teachers and students. So thank you and I support them today. Absolutely, I think TC Palm did a horrible job of reporting your school board building, which has been in the works for a long time, is not touching that tax money and so the community thinks it's all you. And it's not. You guys are up here fighting as much as I can see is in, within your power, same with Karen on the union, and everybody's mad at you guys and they're, they're sitting back while Tallahassee is destroying us and they have no idea about any of these bills, what they mean, what they say, and what they're doing. So please, let's work on informing about that. Most of all, I support every single word that Tina McSully said and I don't think I need to say anything more about that. And I'm just gonna reiterate what I said at the county commission meeting last week. You guys have some kind of power here or we wouldn't need your votes, we would just, they would check the boxes and get whatever they want. Take a vote that stands up for our kids the way we've stood up for turtles when we didn't like the lighting that was going in on Hutchinson Island. Care about our kids as much as our turtles. And finally, I, I have a whole nother letter to the editor that I could read, but I have passed out. Please, anybody, reach out, get more information, watch what they're doing. And I urge you to not allow this not-safe, temporary location. And to be quite honest, wherever they end up, I will never support them and wish them well because I don't think they're good neighbors. I will never say kumbaya to people who lie, cheat, and steal and then say, "Let's be friends." It's ridiculous. Thank you. Thank you, Lawrence. Mike Vazadi?
Balleid.
Balleid?
Sorry, that's my writing.
Balleid. Looked like a Z there.
How do we spell it?
It probably looks more like a hostage note than a, than anything else.
B-A-L-A-D-E?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I wasn't really planning on speaking, but you know, I just don't think there could be enough voices about the safety issue. And so my wife and I are relatively new to the area, last three or four years, and I remember the summer that we first moved in, we went to investigate the school just to take a look at it, where our daughter was gonna be going. And as we drove down this little tiny residential street, we kind of looked at each other and laughed and said, "You can't be serious, it's not really a school down here, is there?" And as we continued further down, we kind of laughed even harder and said, "This is a joke, right?" And when we finally got down to PCE, we were just dismayed, like, wow, you know, this is where the school is. And you know, of course, PCE looks the way that it does and that's a whole separate issue, but it turns out to be a fantastic school. We couldn't love it more, we're both very, very involved. But it's almost like you couldn't make up a worse possible place to stick another school. It's, it's like, if you had to make up a bad story, this would be it. You've got a school that's already far too big for a road that's far too old and now you're gonna put another school of almost equal size in front of it? And stagger times or not, think about it, the only reason that this almost works now is because cars go all the way down 34th, go around a loop and come all the way back out. There's no cross-traffic, there's no, you know, there's no jockeying for a position necessarily. Think about the poor people that do live back in those neighborhoods trying to get out under the current conditions. And now imagine them trying to get out when you've got several hundred cars turning across that street constantly. I mean, talk about a recipe for log jams and disasters and the safety vehicles. Again, I mean, you almost can't make up how bad this story is. If, if you went around Palm City and tried to say, "What's the worst possible location we could stick another school?", that would be the location and please keep that in mind. I mean, I absolutely feel for the folks looking for a temporary place to have their charter school. This is not it. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? This is last call.
My name's Kelly Garner, most of you know me. I spent 11 years of my life sitting in the Palm City car line. I don't have a child there anymore, so I don't have a horse in this race, but I would like to tell you, I was there probably years ago when you were there, when we had 1,000 children. Now we have 700 with the One Citrus open. I have been there through so many different times. We have tried 15 different ways to make that car line safer for 34th Street without, that's before we add another 700 students. We moved some car lines to the back, which now is not allowed for safety reasons because we were not allowed to block MAP road because that would not be safe. And that was before the fire station was there. I have a child at Hidden Oaks right now. We have the same problem. We're not allowed to block Martin Highway, which is a four-lane road, by the way, and even when we double up in the Hidden Oaks parking lot, we still block it. And if it rains, Lord help you, you are not gonna be able to get down that four-lane highway ever. That school has 1,100 children, six buses, and half of them walk. So you really are only talking about car line for about 400 to 500 kids on a four-lane road. I live a tenth of a mile away, my son walks, but if I have to go somewhere there, it takes me 15 to 20 minutes to get down just that four-lane section. So let's talk about 34th Street. There is no shoulder on that road, by the way. None, not one. You know what's there? A sidewalk where you might have to pull up and hit one of our kids that's walking. There is no way for a safety vehicle to get down that road if it is constantly blocked. And I, I appreciate your traffic study, I appreciate all of that, but I would tell you, go out there, sit in that car line, see how long it is. If it rains, try that out. We'll be there, like, I sub at Palm City, it rained last week, we had the car line going till 8:20 because trying to get everybody through. So now let's add in all of the students at TCCA. We're never gonna get there, they're never gonna get there. You're gonna have tardies all over the place, you're losing educational time, you're not gonna have parents there, and it's a safety concern. I'm telling you, this is not the place. There are plenty of places in Martin County, but why on a two-lane residential road that is a dead end, you would think about adding 700 more children is the worst idea I can possibly think of. There are lots of empty buildings right now in Martin County, there's a lot of empty space. I'm sure we can all work together and I would be happy to support them to help find another location, but this is not the place for TCCA to go. Thank you.
Thank you. Kelly, you need to fill out a form. Trina Phillips?
Hi. I'm a Palm City Elementary former parent. I have niece and nephew that go there. I'm also a Citrus Grove parent and I'm planning on switching to Classical Academy next year. I have no issues with traffic on 34th Street, rain or shine, I've never been tardy in five years. We give ourselves 18 minutes to load up the car, drive 3.7 miles, wait in car line, which once you're there, is never really more than four to seven minutes. And I've never felt rushed. The statements of the car line is 45 minutes long, are parents who get there before 7:00 a.m. and wait for the school to open, and the last few who get there at 7:32 and are tardy. Safety patrol gets dropped off at 6:45 in the morning and the tardy bell is at 7:30. The ones that are on 34th Street after 7:26 are flying down the road and have no one in their way, after school care. No matter what time I'm there, I've never hit traffic, whether I pick up off a Palm
Kelly, you need to fill out a form.
Yeah, I do, sorry.
Trina Phillips.
Hi. I'm a Palm City Elementary former parent, I have niece and nephew that go there. I'm also a Citrus Grove parent, and I'm planning on switching to Classical Academy next year. I have no issues with traffic on 34th Street, rain or shine, I've never been tardy in five years. We give ourselves 18 minutes to load up the car, drive 3.7 miles, wait in car line, which once you're there, is never really more than four to seven minutes. And I've never felt rushed. The statements of the car line is 45 minutes long, are parents who get there before 7:00 AM and wait for the school to open, and the last few who get there at 7:32 and are tardy. Safety patrol gets dropped off at 6:45 in the morning, and the tardy bell is at 7:30. The ones that are on 34th Street after 7:26 are flying down the road and have no one in their way, after school care. No matter what time I'm there, I've never hit traffic, whether I pick up off of Palm City Elementary Road or on 34th Street. If the concern is emergency vehicles, there are two lanes, grass, 20 driveways, two streets, and seven businesses to pull over into. If this is a concern at 8:00 AM when TCCA is going to school, then why is it not an issue at 7:15 when Palm City is going to school? If there is an emergency, the fire department is literally right next door, just under one mile. In the worst case, that they are delayed by traffic, they would get to Palm City Elementary 10 minutes faster than they would to Citrus Grove or anywhere else in town. They could also have two emergency vehicles leave at the same time to go to Palm City Elementary, have one go down 34th Street and the other on Palm City Elementary Avenue. The Cross Street Church is less than .2 miles off of map road, Palm City Elementary is .7 miles down 34th Street. If there's an emergency at Palm City, there'll be a half-mile of open road beyond Cross Church to get to Palm City Elementary. In every single event, including events such as Fall Fest at Palm City Elementary, where all 700 students are invited, there are a minimum of 250 cards at Palm City Elementary at once. No one has ever had any issues with parking in the grass or being blocked in. For the few outspoken parents at Palm City Elementary, Classical Academy should not be the issue. Next year, they're gonna be the ones with new construction, there will be construction vehicles going up and down that street all day, and when their parking lot is torn down, they're gonna be the ones in the portable classrooms with no parking lot. I personally think this is a personal issue with a couple people at Palm City Elementary. There are some PTA members at Palm City that are still not telling anyone that they are switching because they feel of the backlash at the school, and that's why a lot of the parents, they're not releasing teachers' names or anything till June 3rd, till after the school is out. But there is a person that is against Classical Academy that has a monetary interest in this. And I really think that that's what the issue is. I don't want to bring up anyone else's name or personal issues, but I really think that that's really what the issue is. I don't think that one school or the other is causing the issue.
Thank you, Trina. Okay, so that's all I have here, so we're gonna take a break for five minutes, and then we'll come back. Thank you. Diane, you have that other form, I need to write this on the back. Ready, Diane?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. Okay, so we're back now, we're gonna go back and pick up 18.03. This is a resolution on the temporary Palm City location of TCCA, requested by Victoria Treasure Coast Classical Academy has a planned temporary location on 34th Street in Palm City. This is the public entrance and car line entrance for Palm City Elementary School. TCCA's planned enrollment is 770 students in August of 2019 at this temporary location with no bus transportation. Board Member Daphenthaller requested at the March 26, 2019, regular school board meeting that the school board adopt a resolution regarding this issue. I believe we have, the board members have a copy of the issue, and you have a copy to display. So, I'll read it through once, and then we'll go to comment and discuss what we want to do here.
Before you do that, may I, may I make some statements?
Sure.
Okay. So, before we address the contents of the resolution in today's school board agenda, I would like to make several comments. I want to make it clear that I realize that TCCA Charter Schools application has been approved by this board. I accept that. However, it is my responsibility as a school board member and public official to protect the rights of all students in our county, whether they attend any one of our public schools and any one of our charter schools. I also want to state that if the Martin County School District presented a request to build another school on 34th Street, which I don't believe they would because it wouldn't make sense, however, if they did, I would adamantly oppose it due to the safety and health concerns that have been presented regarding TCCA's proposal to use it as a temporary site. It was shared with me as I was trying to come, write this proposal and get some advice on this proposal, it was shared with me that TCCA is a public charter school in our county. Florida had, at a state level, has created laws favoring charter schools and given them the rights equal to and sometimes better than our traditional schools. I believe in school choice, but I believe we should all be concerned with the legislators passing laws that favor one set of schools over another. This implies that they favor one set of children over another, and if that is the case, then that's despicable. I would hope anyone and everyone involved in education would make decisions that are in the best interest of all students. I was asked, as I was asking questions about writing this proposal, I was asked, "What is the intent of the resolution?" The following was proposed, was posed to me. "If the resolution leads to TCCA not obtaining approval to use a 34th Street site, can they find an alternate site in a timely manner since there is four months until they are scheduled to open their doors?" Well, I want to ask, "Does this mean that a charter school's operating rights takes precedent over the health and safety of the affected community? I do not believe state law gives charters unchecked ability to operate in a manner or location that endangers others." I was also asked if district staff conduct, has district staff conducted research to support the Martin County School Board taking a position regarding this resolution in emergency situations, including previous events, and access times, issues with bike riders, et cetera. I believe there's sufficient information, both formal and observable, to fairly and reasonably state that there are health and safety concerns. With this said, I believe ignoring this information would be negligent on our part. I also believe it is unreasonable to suggest that we, as a board, cannot express a concern unless it is irrefutable, unless we have irrefutable proof of specific dangerous conditions. A resolution expressing your sincere safety concern if adopted by the board would constitute a violation by the Martin County School Board, this is what I was told. I want, by the Martin County School Board of the laws governing school boards and charter schools, and that was something that was proposed to me, I would like to, I would like to have the language of the statutes that they believe are violated by a non-binding resolution expressing the board's concerns. Because I really, what I feel is, everybody's afraid of litigation, that's really what it comes down to. They're afraid that if we make a statement, then we're gonna get sued, or something's gonna happen. And you know what? Really, what it should be about is about what's best for students, that's the bottom line, okay? And if you do, if anyone does their due diligence, I believe in a court of law, they're going to side with whoever was making decisions in the best interest of children. That's just the way I've always operated. So, I would like to have, I would like that to be explained to me with relevant burdens of proof and legal standards governing any claim that could be brought as a result of the passage of this resolution. And if you would like to read the resolution, or if you'd like me to, it's up to you.
Thank you. So, I'm gonna read it through once, and then we'll go to the board for comments, okay? This is a resolution of the School Board of Martin County, Florida, to communicate and coordinate between the Martin County School District and the Treasure Coast Classical Academy so as to minimize disruption in learning environments and mitigate risks of traffic flows and safety risks. Whereas the Martin County School Board, the board, approved the charter application for Treasure Coast Classical Academy, TCCA, to begin operations for the 2019-20 school year. And whereas for the 1920 school year, TCCA's plan to the temporary, to temporarily conduct classes at whatever the street address, southwest 34th Street, Palm City, Florida 34990, which is blank miles away from Palm City Elementary, located at 1951 Southwest 34th Street, Palm City, Florida 34990. And whereas the Martin County School Board shares the concerns of parents, guardians, teachers, leadership, and staff regarding limited access for first responders and emergency vehicles to reach Palm City Elementary due to the increased number of vehicles based on the enrollment...
Excuse me a minute, I don't think you have the right one, so, the most...
Try that one.
Yeah. So, if you can read that paragraph again.
Sorry.
It's okay.
Move this one away. Whereas the Martin County School Board shares the concerns of parents, guardians, teachers, leadership, and staff regarding limited access for first responders and emergency vehicles to reach Palm City Elementary during situations when timing is critical due to the increased number of vehicles based on student enrollment of and TCCA's location on 34th Street. Whereas the Martin County School Board shares the concerns of parents, guardians, teachers, leadership, and staff regarding emergency situations that would require an immediate evacuation of the school and would make it necessary for not only emergency vehicles to access 34th Street, but would also require school buses and parents or guardians to pick up students and teachers and staff to leave the school campus in a timely manner. Whereas the Martin County School Board, teachers, leadership, and staff recognize concerns regarding dismissal time delays due to severe weather conditions and the ability of vehicles to access 34th Street in a timely manner, even with TCCA's plan for staggered arrival and dismissal times. Whereas the Martin County School Board is responsible for working to avoid unnecessary health and safety concerns for students, parents, and guardians, and nearby residents and businesses in the proximity of the two schools. Whereas the Martin County School Board shares the safety concerns of parents, guardians, teachers, leadership, and staff regarding Palm City Elementary's bike riders' late arrival and bike riders' extended day dismissal. Whereas the Martin County School Board shares the concerns of parents, guardians, teachers, leadership, and staff regarding a disruption of Palm City Elementary School's program due to TCCA's 34th Street location. Whereas the Martin County School Board acknowledges that the teachers, leadership, and staff of PC, Palm City Elementary are appropriately focused on educating and supporting our students academically and emotionally, and should not be additionally burdened with concerns regarding the scheduling of school programs, events, and parent-teacher conferences due to traffic delays caused by the location of an additional school on 34th Street. Whereas the Martin County School Board shares the concerns of teachers, leadership, and staff regarding the traffic delays for teachers and staff leaving for off-campus training at the end of the school day. Whereas the Martin County School Board calls upon TCCA staff to find a location that will not negatively impact the present location of Martin County schools and communities. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Martin County School Board that the district will communicate and coordinate with TCCA staff to ensure that the superintendent designates one or two key staff for TCCA to communicate with. So, who wants to start?
I'll start, that's fine. So, I don't know how you all feel about this start time thing. I guess I have some questions, and I don't know who's gonna answer my questions. Going through all this, listening to some of the comments on both sides, knowing, you know, the 34th Street isn't really appropriate in my mind for either school, and many of you know that it's been my wish for a while to relocate Palm City Elementary School, but that's probably not gonna happen either. So, I'd like to know, number one, I asked about start times changing if this does happen, extending start times 15 or 20 minutes further ahead of ours. But secondly, I'd like to know, does TCCA have a lease? Is it signed? I'm just gonna go through my ramblings here.
Sure, go ahead.
I spoke to two county commissioners this week, and last, and the county has no say in this. They have, they have not voted on the 34th Street location, nor are they going to. They claim that this is a by right facility because it was a church and gathering place and a school in the past, and nobody ever bothered it back then, and they felt that it was fine. I think the building department or somebody had some issues, and that's when they came up with the traffic study and did all that with the dual lanes and that, according to some folks at the county, county commission. But they didn't vote on that. They've already voted on the Cove Road location, from what I'm told, and, and that's going to be moving forward. So, there's no approvals required by the BCC, and it was said several times, and I thought about this, that, that we're, this, the board is approving this location, we have nothing to do with this location at all. If I had my way, it'd be in a different location, and I've even been talking to realtors about trying to find another location, like maybe the old Save-A-Lot out on Monterey Road and Canter Highway where Tina's operating her new business. Where's Tina? She's gone? She had to leave, but Tina's got a place there right next door to her, or, you know, maybe at the old, well, maybe the old YMCA on Willoughby Boulevard. There are so many facilities that are out there that are probably more conducive to this than this, somebody said it, this small 34th Street that's overburdened by not only one school, but, but two. So, that's really all I have right now. You know, I've also been told that if we, if we fought this in any way, that the legislature would just override us and, and give it approval. So, I would like to, at least for the, I mean, if they're gonna build a school here in town, and they're going to, wherever it's going to be eventually, we're gonna need to work with them like we work with the Indian River State College and, and the Hope School, and what's the other one?
Clark.
Clark, well, that's IRSC, so, they, you know, we're gonna have to work together, and we have to figure out a way to make that happen. We were told some things when this came before us, and we had our ceremonial approval, but that was only ceremonial, the state would have approved it if we denied it anyway, that they were going to have all types of students in there, and they were going to bring in minorities, and they were gonna have scholarships and all this, and I'd like to know what the status of that is, because I'm hearing tonight that they're only taking cream of the crop kids and, you know, privileged kids, and I'm concerned about that. Because every student deserves a good education, whether it be from private school, charter school, or Martin County School District. And I happen to be a fan of the Martin County School District, and they did a great job of educating my students, my three students that I raised from, from birth, and, and I'm thankful that the school district was here and that our teachers and staff do a great job. So, I don't, you know, I don't disagree with anything that you've got here, but many people that are here in the room have sat on that school line and have, have dealt with, probably over the last 60 years that that school's in existence, some emergency vehicle passing them while they were sitting on line. Somebody said, I think it was Kelly, that she's been there, what was it, 11 years? 11 years. Before that, the, and I think staff should look at this, is, we used to have the school buses come down 34th Street, and the parents come in Palm City School Road. I don't know why we can't go back to doing that, even if it's on a temporary basis till we, till we get the new school built and figure out a way to keep them off 34th Street altogether. That way, we don't have any clash, they'll be gone in 84 days, I hope, but I think we should be looking at, if we're not moving the school, how do we change this traffic pattern to go down through Palm City School Road? And even if we have to purchase land, there's vacant land on Palm City School Road, on the west side of it, there's a house, I think it's vacant, I'm not sure, maybe we could utilize eminent domain, maybe the county could utilize eminent domain, and we can figure out a way to make school buses and our parents, or just our parents, go down there. I don't think we have many school buses, was it six school buses, or?
How many? Four? Three.
Three school buses, so...
Five?
I wouldn't have any problem...
Transportation is saying three.
Three school buses, okay.
Well, they're saying there's two shuttles, too.
Three that serve the school...
Kayleen, you need to come up here.
Regardless, Kayleen, it's a whole lot less impact on the 34th Street residents to have three school buses doing the speed limit down that road than somebody rushing to take their kid to school and, you know, possibly having an accident or something like that.
So, my question is, why was that changed, and why, why are we not looking at that? There must have been a reason for that to be changed.
I want it to be looked at.
Well, I'm, and I'm not certain because I wasn't here when that happened. We did change the fact that the cars could not come into the back because you cannot mix cars and buses together, and there was no way to separate them to circle around. Up in the front, where the teachers and stuff park and the, and the parents are coming in, I'm not certain that there's enough space for the buses to maneuver around in there. But we do actually, we have three buses that actually service the students that attend Palm City Elementary, and then two shuttle buses come with kids that are coming from, for other, you know, for programs that they serve. So, Bastie Creek has a shuttle bus coming in, and Citrus Grove does as well. But they come in staggering at, you know, later times than the original buses.
And you mentioned, Mike, about, you know, emergency vehicles having to get down there. Yes, that's, I mean, the sheriff's department or the fire chief and Safe Day said they could not say they can't get there, and I'm not saying they can't get there. I'm saying the time it takes in a, in a situation that's crucial in terms of time, and you know some of those traumatic events that happen, but also, if there was a gas leak and they had to come out of there, you know, I mean, so it's not just being able to get one emergency vehicle, two in there, what happens if there's a gas leak or something else that happens, a 9/11, whatever? That's what I'm talking about. And I, it's not that I don't want... And I, it's not that I don't want the charter school to have a temporary place, I'm just concerned about where the temporary place is and how it's affecting the health and safety of our kids or could affect the health and safety of our kids. And I think that if we're all looking at working together, I would think that the charter school administration would work with us by helping to find a different location that would not create the problems that we're talking about. That's what I'm asking.
And that gets me to my question is, do they have a signed lease already? Has their earnest money been done? They, they have no approvals required by the county, but I don't know about the building department. Obviously, if they're going to bring in 18 portables, they need building permits. So, those are some of the questions.
Okay, so I have your things written down.
Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Mr. Anderson, did you ask anything?
As a civics teacher, I'm keenly aware of citizens' rights and choices that they get to make. I'm also pretty clear on the fact that the state legislature is all behind the charter schools. And there's nothing in the world that I can do about that, even if I wanted to. Okay? Whether I agree with it or not is, is another issue. But that is pretty clear to anyone, you could see that. But what I do know is that given the situation that I'm seeing here with the location, okay? Also with those rights and responsibility, rights comes responsibilities and obligations. And it is also a factor of the matter that we should consider what is known as the common good. The common good. There's another part of the puzzle here that, that seems to put pressure on me as a board member. We're getting close to, even though school hasn't ended yet, but we're getting close to beginning of another, another school year. And you guys are not clear on just what's what, okay? Nobody can tell us if a lease has been signed, but that's not my problem. But what I do know is that, and I'll just use myself for example, my inability to plan in a timely manner and to do things right should not create an emergency on anybody else's part or make them feel pressured. I do feel a sense of not wanting to, to, to be a, an obstacle to you starting school because you have the kids there. But nevertheless, I'm looking again at what I call the common good. Now, with regards to what's happening there, and, and it's pretty clear to me, if the shoe was on the other foot, you'll be singing the same song these people are saying, probably rightfully so. So, I don't want to rain on your parade, I don't want to stop your progress, but based on the safety issue and what I see here, as a school board member, I, I just could not go along with that. And that's what I'm saying.
So, I just, I have a couple of questions. First of all, I want to clarify that, you know, yes, the Palm City Elementary kids are our kids, but so are the TCCA kids. They're all our children. And we want them all to be safe. I was wondering if the sheriff's department is here, can they address the safety on that road as it has it been evaluated by them? I'd like to hear from them if that's the case. And then, I, I haven't, the first time that I saw this was today, this, right before the meeting, so I haven't really had time to go through. Really, the first time is when you read it, Ms. Roberts. So, I might have some more questions as I start to look at it more, but that's kind of my starting point.
Okay. Thank you. And before we get back to second comments and, and getting some questions answered, I just had a couple things. Garrett?
I'm looking for you.
So, in your expertise, knowing, so there's two, two ways, two directions to go with this. One is obviously to work with somebody and try to solve a problem and try to, to come to some agreement in that end. The other thing is to try to minimize and control things that are in our control. So are there things within our control at that Palm City Elementary location that we can do to minimize safety concerns and take care of some of these issues at the, to the best of your?
So, we may be able to relocate the parent drop-off loop from the Palm City roadside. The problem there may be that the cars may back up on the 714.
Okay. But, but there's the possibility that would we, we would then be flipping the two? Is that what we would be doing?
Correct.
We would, there's a possibility that would we be, then be able to put the buses on 34th Street and take care of however they have to do their turnaround and move the cars the other way and put the cars at the other location. There's that possibility.
Can I ask a question about that? Will that affect Hidden Oaks Middle School? Because I know that's on 714 also. How, how would that affect that?
So, I don't know how to predict what the impact will be till it kind of actually happens, but based on the line on 34th Street, it will be extended on 714. So, you know, what impact that has, I, I don't know that since 714 is now two lanes.
Right.
It's, you know, we'd have to kind of see.
But there is that. Is there anything else you can think of that would?
We'll have to make some modifications to the school. We put in some safety walkways and we, and we blocked the, the connection between the parking lots.
Right.
So you cannot, you can't drive through 34th Street to get to Palm City Road through the school any longer. So we'd have to make those, we'd have to make some improvements there, modifications.
For the buses to turn around in the loop, would you have to remove the, some of the parking in the front?
We'll have to run a truck turning template on it just to, just to verify. So we have to, we have to look into it, but.
Okay.
So, I want to make the point that, that, can I say something or not?
Sure, go ahead.
Okay. Is this a conversation and a discussion?
Well.
No. You tell me.
Okay, well, I was going to give everybody, but go ahead.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Because it's about that.
Okay, go ahead.
So my concern is, is that we're going to make all these changes and it's capital money, but yet we don't get capital money from charter schools, correct?
Correct.
All right. So that's, that's a concern I have.
Okay.
Just want to state that. If we were to make the changes, I'm not saying we were.
Thank you. So is there anything else you can think of?
Not at this time, no.
Okay, thank you. Then my next question is for Dr. Featherstone. So, Dr. Featherstone, knowing that we are having changing enroll, and I know that this is right off the top of your head, but in knowing that we're having changing enrollments and that we have decreasing enrollments, is there a manner in which we would be able to shift students who are going to Palm City Elementary in some manner so that they're not going to that school, so that the enrollment at that school would be less? And I'm not saying that any of these are ideal solutions, I'm just trying to think of all possible ways. So if you had X number of students going to Palm City Elementary, is that a direction that could be handled and what do you think that would look like?
I think that the boundary advisory committee staff would have to meet to discuss the possible options of transportation of students who would be identified based on their area that they're living, who would be more likely to go to Citrus with limited capacity and then as well to Bessie. Would that alleviate the amount that you're looking to do? I, I'm not certain.
No, and I'm just looking more for, for instance, is there a VPK at Palm City Elementary?
Yes.
So if there's a VPK at Palm City Elementary and if we recognize that most VPK parents are driving students to the VPK, correct?
Yes, but there's also an ESC pre-K that requires a bus.
So, so we have both ESC, VPK and, and regular VPK at Palm City Elementary?
Yes.
Can we? Ms. Roberts?
Yes, ma'am.
On that note, as you're talking about that and we look at the reconstruction of Palm City Elementary, you know, one of the things that we had talked about was, you know, split, you know, moving kids to the existing schools because of the limitations on that site and how small it is and what, is that something, Garrett, maybe, what is our timeline to start the clearing of Palm City that when the boundary committee meets, we're meeting May 2nd or 2nd? That that's a consideration? What, what is the plan for Palm City Elementary look like as far as clearing that site?
So we have a few options. We can put in portables in the field and create a temporary school while we raise the old school and we can still conduct business there. Or we could look at possibly relocating the children to other schools and doing a split sessions to kind of handle some of the capacity issues.
But what is our timeline to start the actual construction at Palm City Elementary? Do you know when that date would?
So we're approximately, once we select the architect and construction manager, it's approximately two years to completion. So, that would be the opening date.
But when we talk about construction beginning, like, we're obviously going to have to tear down the old Palm City Elementary.
Correct.
To build the new one to have room for that. When, when would that take place?
So.
Approximately. I know that you don't exactly.
Yeah, it would, it would be next year.
Okay. So it's next school year?
Next school year.
In 1920.
Well, if we had kids off the campus.
If we had.
If we went that route. That's what I'm saying. If we went that route, but we had also talked about because of the limitations at Palm City Elementary, even putting portables at another school, keeping the school whole, but them being at another actual school.
Property. We'd probably have to split that.
Or split, yeah.
We'd have to split the, the population if they were to move to the other sites. And if we put portables there to keep the campus intact, they would have to do construction while, I mean, they would have to build around.
And there would be the parking issue and all the things that we're talking about right now.
Yeah.
And if I, if I may mention also, there's, there's also an industrial complex that borders up to the property. So if we were to stack on Palm City Road, that entrance to that business then would be impeded.
Yeah, those small businesses.
Twice a day. So, that's something just to consider.
Yeah.
Thank you. Mr. De Tralisi and then Mrs. Gaylord.
Thank you, Garrett, don't go anywhere, Garrett. There's a couple of scenarios you left out. Because I keep hearing 84 days in my mind. So, they vacate the cross church and school with 700 or 800 students. Palm City Elementary School could relocate into that building and facility and operate as a whole school. I'm, I'm not kidding. And could operate as a whole school by taking over that lease for some period of time and taking over their portables for some period of time and operate out of that facility while we operate, while we rebuild Palm City Elementary School in entirety, so we're totally off the property. Secondly, there's a possibility, and I mentioned that vacant land on Palm City School Road on the whole west side, maybe we can make a deal if that house isn't available to go around it and we could, you know, buy, rent, lease, whatever, 50 feet of it and put a road that goes around Palm City, it comes off of Palm City School Road and around, so we don't have to stack. I, I can't see us stacking out on the 714. It's not going to happen. The sheriff's will be, the sheriff's department will be all over us. But there, where there's a will, there's a way. We may be able to take it off of Oak Brook Estates and come in the back way along the north border of, I don't know the guy's name of that property, but there's a law office there now.
Yeah.
Lori Sewell's office. We could go in that road and come along the north border of that property right into Palm City Elementary School. There's got to be, if there's a will, there's a way. And, and I think we can figure that out.
Well, and I, I think that's a really great, because one of the limitations that we were having with the reconstruction of Palm City Elementary and the issues of keeping it on-site were that construction going on when the kids are so close and then how, possibly having to move those portables to another, so I think that is.
Never mind contractors on the site, strangers that aren't approved to be on the site with students. It could be.
We don't have strangers on campus that are not approved to be on-site.
Well, every, every employee of the construction companies, no matter who's on there, would have to be pre-approved.
They are.
Okay, that's fine. That's fine, sorry.
Mrs. Gaylord, did you have any comment you wanted to make before we got some more questions answered?
No, I don't.
May I say something else?
Miss, hold on one second, I have an attorney light on. Is that you?
That's me. And Mrs. Deppen, Deppenthaller earlier referenced my email that was in response to a previous draft of a resolution. What we will do, especially if she would like to see and so the whole board can see, we will do a memorandum that brings in the statutes and references that I referred to in that email. When I give a legal opinion, whatever my personal opinion might be about charter schools and the rights that they have, isn't what I talk to you about. What I talk to you about is what the law tells you as a board in your relationship with the charter school. The three areas which I highlighted for Mrs. Deppenthaller, that TCCA is one of your public charter schools. It's the third. As one of your public charter schools, you have a legal duty not to give them disparate treatment when compared to your other traditional public schools or your other charter schools. You have a legal duty not to unfairly disadvantage Treasure Coast Classical Academy in operating its charter school. And you have a legal duty not to limit or interrupt the operation of TCCA as a Martin County School District public charter school. Which then, when I look at a resolution, gives the moment of being perplexed. Because a resolution generally doesn't accomplish anything. It's not directing action. That would be what you all would traditionally do with motions and agenda items. A resolution is raising issues and taking a stance without generally compelling or having action taken. When I look at the resolution, the question that I ask myself.
Can I, can I talk while you're talking or do I need to wait till you're completely finished?
It's whatever the chair or.
If you, why don't you write it down so he?
I am writing it down, but.
Okay. Go ahead.
Four months from now, all Martin County public schools, including TCCA, are opening. When I look at the resolution, if it had an impact which led to TCCA needing to look for a new site, I don't know if they get a new site. I don't know what process they went through that got them to the proposed site that they are looking at. My concern for you all as a board is if as a result of the resolution, they encounter problems and are not able to open in a timely manner in the fall, then as a board, you all could be liable to them. And it's, I would expect that TCCA would not go to a circuit court. They're going to go to an administrative law judge, which is supplied by the Florida Department of Education. I have been reading their opinions over the last year. The Florida Department of Education is backing the state law and looking to assure that charter schools have their rights. An administrative law judge proceeding is fairly quick compared to a normal legal proceeding. And if they were successful, there would both be an issue of damages and the issue of fees. The, when I look at the body of the resolution, I think it makes every bit of common sense to know you put two schools that close together, that you're increasing traffic flow, that you're interrupting the ability for traffic, including emergency traffic, to make it through. But one of the things when I talked about having the superintendent staff the resolution, I don't think at this point this board knows what Martin County Fire and Rescue's opinion is regarding their ability to access. And I don't think this board at this point knows what the opinion of the Martin County Sheriff's Office is on the ability to access these areas with both schools located. But there is a very logical, but I don't know whether it's valid assumption regarding safety issues built into this resolution, where one of the things I would hope you would do is have the superintendent verify with Martin County Fire and Rescue and with the Martin County Sheriff's Office as to whether these issues of safety rise to a level Sheriff's Office as to whether these issues of safety rise to a level that the school board should be taking a position and raising that issue. This is one of two versions of the resolution which my office received late this morning. The last "whereas" clause, whereas the Martin County School Board calls upon TCCA staff to find a location that will not negatively impact the present location of Martin County Schools and Communities. One, it's in a non-action area, but if that is you all as a board asking TCCA to not go to the location on 34th and seek a new location, you all need to be very solid that you aren't standing alone, that this is something that Martin County Fire and Rescue agrees with, that the Sheriff's Office agrees with, or I'm concerned on how this board can defend itself in an administrative law proceeding.
So, I don't want you to prolong what you're saying because you're a little bit off where I was going with the resolution, okay? First of all, to say that we would be providing disparate treatment to the charter school unfairly disadvantaged them and not, and limit, and their interruption of operation really is a concern of mine, because that's exactly what's happening to us as a public school entity, okay, number one. Number two, I will say that, to the extent that this resolution, this is a resolution, I'm not expecting action, because you know what? Everybody already said that this is a done deal. What I am trying to do is state all of the concerns that I have, and hopefully the board has, regarding the health and safety of the students, because it needs to be in writing, and I feel like if we didn't put it in writing in some way, we're negligent. And I also want to mention that I began my talk with, it's my responsibility as a school board member and public official to protect the rights of all students in our county, whether they attend any one of our public schools and any one of our charter schools. I said that from the beginning, so I just want to make that clear, because sometimes people change things, say things, and it sounds like they're the only ones that believe that, and that's not the case. So, what I'm saying to you is, okay, that line that you just read, it can be taken out. What I'm concerned about is, if we do not put something in writing stating that we have concerns regarding the health and safety of our students in that neighborhood and that community, then we are being negligent to the students that we are supposed to be protecting. It is not our job as a board, I understand that, I don't understa, well, I understand and don't understand it, it's not our job as a board to make the decision. It's growth management. I mean, they have to do their job. I talked to the fire chief. I understand that they cannot say they cannot get down that road. Of course they can get down that road. No matter how, how they do it, they have to get down there. Does that mean they're going to get down there and not have, and not lose seconds and minutes? I don't believe that can be the case. Of course, they can't say that. So, we're really in a bind here, because we're being asked to do things and change schedules and worry about, you know, how everything's going to affect a school that's been there for how many years?
Sixty.
All right, thank you. We would never, as a board or as a school system, think to put a school on that road for the very reasons I'm trying to say it shouldn't be there. But I cannot tell them not to do it. All I want to do is have it in writing that we have concerns, because if something happens, and hopefully nothing will, we, as a board, were able to say that we explicitly stated these concerns. We didn't have growth management as part of it, we didn't have fire chief, we didn't have shit, whatever, because they're all not able to support it, for whatever reason, they seem to not be able to support it. But I think we have a responsibility to our students and our families to say that we have concerns about what's happening. I would hope, I would hope, that, because I'm hoping that what happens with TCCA is, we do work cooperatively together and collaboratively. That's the best way to do anything. It's teamwork. So, I would hope that you would hear everything that we're talking about and listen and understand that it's not being directed at you in a negative way. What I'm trying to say is, there are major concerns about where that school's located. If there's any possible way, just like I think Mr. Anderson said, or whoever, to find a different, or I think it was Mr. DiTulisi, to find a different location, only because it is a concern regarding vehicles getting in and out of that road, emergency vehicles, cars, because we already have a problem with that, as well as if there was a situation, don't, hopefully there wouldn't be, a nine eleven, Marjory Stonemans Douglas, a gas leak, think about that road being backed up and how are families going to get in and out, in and out. So, all I'm asking is, I would hope that you would understand, I am not against what you're trying to do, I just think the location is not the right location. And that is, and I think it really compromises the health and safety of our students, and that's all I'm saying. So, to you, this is a resolution. It's not meant to have any action other than to say, and that's what I tried to say in my information to you, okay? So, there you go.
So, so, Mr. George?
And just the last one, this version?
Can I hang on one second? Okay. So, it's, it's my understanding that the wheresses are either stating facts or they're stating feelings or opinions. So, if I go through these one by one, all right, so the first one is a statement of fact, where we approved a charter application for Treasure Coast Classical Academy, correct? I'm going to skip the second one for a minute, okay? The next one is, the Martin County School Board shares the concerns. The, the fourth one is, the Martin County School Board shares concerns. The fifth one is, we recognize concerns. The next one is, we are responsible for working to avoid, et cetera, right? The next one is, sharing safety concerns. Then we're sharing concerns. Then we're acknowledging that teachers, leadership, and staff, et cetera. Then the last one on that page is sharing concerns. So, I think out of those, those nine that I've just read, I don't think have, should, and I'm asking you, I don't think they should be any concern or any point of liability on the part of the school board for using that language as those beginning wheresses.
I would agree with you.
Okay. The second one that says, whereas for the 1920 school year, TCCA's plan to temporary conduct classes, et cetera, I think since we, we don't know that as a necessary fact, if we don't, I mean, I don't know if we know that as a fact, or if we just know that, if we think that's what's happening. So, I think the wording of that needs to be adjusted based on whatever the district has received, so I'm looking to you, Dr. Featherstone, if you've received anything that has notified us of that location.
No, ma'am.
So, then I would think that we would be rewording that to say that it is our understanding that that is the location. And then by rewording it to that's our understanding, right, then I, then I've met your, I do agree that on the second page where it says, we're calling upon, which is more like an action item, I think that sentence, however it ends up, belongs under what we're resolving. So, I think all the wheresses are completely different than what we're resolving. So, I think the resolving piece is different. Would you agree with that interpretation of a resolution?
One, I would agree that it is requesting the charter school to take an action. The other concern, which I think Mrs. Deppenthaler had talked about removing that paragraph, if she's okay with it, is I get concerned with the possibility that the school board is trying to direct its independent charter school on decisions that are theirs to make.
Sure. And I'm looking more from a point of view of, if you agree that everything else on the first page with the, with the alteration of the second paragraph where it becomes an understanding, if those are all the wheresses, okay? And then we move into the now, therefore it be it resolved, if we resolve as a board that we want to work collaboratively to find a, with Treasure Coast Classical Academy, to find a location that minimizes safety issues, et cetera, or however that's worded. So, I'm not saying that it's necessarily that wording, but I'm saying that those type things would come in the therefore be it resolved piece. I'm just looking at structure right now. Would that be correct?
Yes.
Okay. We still had a couple of questions before we go any further that perhaps we asked if the sheriff representative people, if somebody wanted to answer for us, how you feel, if you could come forward, please. Thank you, we appreciate it. Thank you for being here. So, the question has been raised about safety on that 34th Street, if you want to give us your opinion?
Yes, ma'am. So, Sheriff Snyder has directed my boss, the Director of Law Enforcement, to move through issues pursuant to TCCA. We're here to serve the community, the board, the district, and all students as well, and we're, we're available to move, move through that in whatever decision the board makes and, and that sort of thing. As far as the, the traffic, we're going to get there, whether it's the alternate route or through the congested 34th Street, in so much as there's a problem with the current elementary school that's on the property, and I've moved kids through that school as well. And we, we probably fight those issues as it is. We will move on the sidewalk, we'll get there, however we have to get there. It's not perfect, I understand that. What I don't believe we've discussed is, there's been a request for an SRO on this property as well, so that's another means to monitor and, and moving forward the situation with the temporary relocation. And also, we did discuss extending the hours of the, of the crossing guard. So, certainly I'd most rather respond to a crisis situation at two o'clock in the morning when there's no traffic. I can't tell you how many times I've run code lights and siren and, and had to fight the traffic. That just comes with the territory. We're going to do what needs to be done. I can't speak for fire rescue.
Okay.
So, but I'm available for any other questions.
Thank you. Does anybody have any more questions for him? So, what's the pleasure of Mr. DiTulisi?
Thank you. I have a question for Mr. George. Tony, understanding with liabilities and, you know, you address, you, you, you open up a problem or you identify a problem and you don't repair that problem, you could be opening yourself up to liabilities. So, does this, it identifies a potential problem, but all this backup and discussions about the problems that already exist on 34th Street, does that open us up to any additional liabilities? That, hey, we knew there was a problem here, what are we doing? Or why didn't we do anything to solve the original problem?
There, it is raising an issue where there is already a great deal of parental traffic with the existing school. And with two public schools, one the charter, it's part of why I think the superintendent should get Martin County Fire Rescue's opinion, because you're looking into an area where it is two schools that are operating.
I've already spoken to the county administrator, and it is not an action that, I mean, she's told me that there's no action for them. So, they're not going to act on this.
And I understand the county commission has no vote that they need to take regarding TCCA's occupation of the property. My concern is the underlying basis on the safety issues that are raised in some of the wherass clauses, and that's where, if it's being properly staffed, the two entities that have problems with accessing school sites or accessing communities when there's heavy traffic, one is the Sheriff's Office, the other's Martin County Fire and Rescue.
Did this not go in front of their planning agency?
No, it did not.
No.
It did not. So, Martin County never looked at this in any way from a planning, safety, or traffic?
Not that I'm aware of. But...
But, but I still don't have any prob, I mean, so I can understand what you're saying, and I think if you are making definitive statements, that's a lot different than sharing concerns with traffic, sharing concerns with dismissal times, acknowledging that parents have concerns and that we share those concerns. I really don't, I mean, is that, I, I don't think that's, I don't think that's inappropriate to have in the front wheresses. I mean, I think if you, if you were definitively stating that there is a risk with Martin County Sheriff's Fire, or Martin County Fire Department to not have access to the school, then I do think, yes, you would need to be able to confirm that and have that stamped on by the fire rescue people, to be sure that that, that we're not making a statement that's untrue. But I think as long as we're making statements, yes?
As long, and it, in one sense deals with that last wher- whereas clause.
The one on the...
If you are taking a step of making a request...
We already said we're going to take that out of there. Don't belabor the point, because we've already said it's not going to be in there, because it is that.
Mrs. Deppenthaler, I understand you made the statement, and I know Mrs. Roberts talked to me about moving it down into the action part.
What would it say in the action place, Mrs. Roberts, then? What was your suggestion?
All I'm saying is, so I'm just trying to get the first page kind of taken care of.
I get that. I think she agrees with the first page. Am I right?
Then if, so for instance, I would say, I wouldn't necessarily say, we are calling upon somebody to ask them to find another location.
Right, I get that, right.
I mean, I think that our resolves should be that we want to work collaboratively with Treasure Coast Classical Academy, that we will have staff, that we want to be sure that we are communicating with fire rescue, et cetera, to make sure. So, I mean, I don't think those are things that are, I think those type of action, be it resolved, that this is what we want to do, I don't think any of those are necessarily inappropriate, because I'm not making any conclusions in any of my therefore be it resolves. Would that be correct?
And I agree with you, as long as you're not then, on the basis of the wherass clause, taking an action or direction towards the charter school. Then I believe you're fine.
Okay, all right. Mrs. Powers?
So, I'm not, I, I don't understand why we wouldn't want to get the opinion of fire rescue that, that this is. And my other point is that this isn't, this resolution, it's the first time we saw it, minutes before the meeting, and the first time I heard it was when you read it. So, it isn't something we would take action on anyway, because it wasn't even on the agenda. We didn't have this. So, I, I mean, I would like to hear what fire rescue has to say. I would like to hear, and that can be incorporated into a resolution that be it, whereas Martin County Fire Rescue has said, or that this is a liability, or...
Well, I will say, I asked Diane to invite them here, correct, Diane? And the Sheriff's Department said they would be here, but what did, I, I can't remember exactly what Mrs. Krysta said. Do you have it in your notes?
I don't.
Could I say something here?
Sure.
First of all, Mr. George, I appreciate you're, you're a lawyer, and I appreciate you keeping us out of trouble. That's what lawyers do, okay? Secondly, I want to say that I want this academy to understand that your kids are our kids as well. Please understand that, okay? I also want to thank Mrs. Deppenthaler for having the courage to stand up and try and speak truth to power, even though it comes at a risk. And I also want to say that these other big shots around here, the county commission, the planning and zoning, the county administrator, the Sheriff's Department, I had a good working relationship with you all, but you all went numb on this issue, okay? And I know why. Nobody want to offend the people in Tallahassee, but you have an obligation to stand up for what's right. Now, again, I'll go back and I just want to reiterate, I don't have anything against you guys, but your rights and, and your choices are one thing, but when they begin to overlap into an area where it's going to cause some problems, or let's just use myself for example, yeah, I got rights, I do whatever I want to do, but the minute my rights and my choices begin to negatively impact my neighbor, then that's where they end. And we need to know that. So, this is just a safety issue. That's all I'm saying. Now, here's what I will say. We want to try and fix this. We want the kids to get in school, but I don't think the process is calling these people up here like we're cross-examining them on such a hot topic. That's not what we need to do. If we want to fix this, why don't we have some kind of session and let them see, because obviously we want this to work now, get these other guys in facilities and whoever make the choices, and let's see what can we do to accommodate this school so they can hit the ground running in August, because, you know, they have a right to do that. But we got, let's be for real about this. But, you know, I have a problem with people that they want to be a leader, but when it gets a little hot in the kitchen there, then they just fizzle out. And that's what has happened. The reason why you don't have an opinion from the fire department, they didn't want... they didn't want to give you one. They didn't want to give you one.
Or were told not to.
How in the world you can have an important issue like this and everybody goes dumb? Give me a break.
Marsha, do you have something you wanted to say, or is this an old line?
No, that's all.
Okay, so at this time, I'd like to take a five-minute break, really a five-minute break, okay? Can you take a break now? Thank you. Thanks, five minutes.
Joke. Big shot when they want it.
Okay, we're back then. Thank you very much. Okay, so I've listed all of our concerns. Procedurally, in order for us to approve a resolution, we would have to have a final version. It would have to be published for seven days.
Right.
I think that perhaps that the chair would entertain action that maybe the appropriate thing to do is to have this list of items that we feel are important, have the superintendent work on these with staff, with TCCA, try to come up with whatever information she can get, however, we can get to some resolution with those things. And then after that is taken care of, so imagine that would take a week, two weeks, something like that. At that point in time, after she's done with that, since this is an action from Mrs. Deppenthaler, if she can meet with Mrs. Deppenthaler and see if there is a final version of a resolution, if there's going to be a resolution, or however we're going to go from there, and then it would be published in time to have the seven-day publish so that we would have it at a meeting. Is that something that would be-
Do we have to wait until the next board meeting, or could we do it at a workshop so that we're not taking quite as long?
You could do it at a workshop. The issue is that we have our workshops, our next-
Or special meeting after a workshop.
Right. And so we could do it, for example, we could do it on May 7th, where we have a regular workshop from 3:00 to 5:00 on May 7th. That would mean that we would need a final version to be published by April 30th, because that would be the seven-day notice requirement.
So I don't, I don't see that being a problem unless they do.
So that is one opportunity. If that doesn't work out, then the next time that we would be meeting, there is also, I believe, a budget workshop on the 14th. So we have like three weeks in a row where we're doing something. We have May 7th, we have May 14th, and we have May 21st. Our regular meeting being on May 21st, a budget workshop being on May 14th, and a regular workshop on May 7th. So there is, and realizing that there's always a week before that that would need a publication. So I think that as long as the superintendent and staff are working on that, as long as you're working, I mean, that would be what I would think an amenable solution is. Mrs. Powers?
What was your date?
Which one?
To have the final?
Well, any one of the three, depending on however quickly or however, whatever time it takes. So if the superintendent is checking out these things that we've listed as concerns, we're trying to work with Treasure Coast Classical Academy to see what we can do together, et cetera, and work collaboratively to try to solve some of these issues, that then we, and we understand now from our attorney what our resolution needs to look like, so we know what our whereses need to be, and then we can work from there as far as our therefore be it resolves pieces that we have afterwards. So you would either see this back on May 7th, 14th, or 21st, knowing that a week before then it would be published. And that would be assuming that we would have a, if we did have it for the 7th or the 14th, it would be a special meeting on the 7th or the 14th. Ma'am?
So I would prefer, I mean, any, whatever dates, because I think that we can reach a resolution or some sort of compromise that we can work this out between now and our regularly scheduled board meeting, when we typically take action on items. So, you know, like, but what, like, March, May 7th, can we get an update on where we are with the, at our next workshop?
At the regular workshop?
And just want to know, okay, what, where are we? What issues have been resolved? Have, has the fire department weighed in? Has the sheriff's department weighed in? Have we looked at options for other routes? Have we looked at other locations? You know, the things that, you know, just an update, a status update by the workshop, and then another one at the next one, and then if we have to go to the third, fine.
I just want to say, I would prefer that we resolve it before the, because May 21st is quite far away. I think it could be resolved in some way by one of the other two meetings.
Well, it could be that we don't even need a resolution if it's resolved.
Well, I don't mean resolve, but the fact that the resolution is written. But I think that I'd rather try to, and it may not happen, by the 7th or the 14th, have it done and brought to the meeting, because I don't really want to wait as long. I mean, it's, time is of the essence, in my opinion, to get these, it's almost the end of the school year. And they're only going to be in there for 84 days supposedly, although with construction and the way construction works, I'm not sure. Hopefully, that'll happen for them, but it's not always the way it works, so.
How do you two feel? Comments?
I would rather see us work something out. And honestly, I, I respect and I appreciate what you're trying to do. I really do. But I also believe that we would be shining a spotlight on a possible liability for the school district if we put these things in.
I don't see how that is, because all it is is protecting us if something was to happen. I don't see what liability, I mean, Tony's already said there wouldn't be a lot-
It would protect us if something happened with-
In the sense that we've said that-
With TCCA being there, but prior to, we were acknowledging, in my opinion, we're acknowledging that there's a problem now. And that opens us up to liabilities.
It's an increased problem with the increased number of cars.
True, but, you know, in litigation?
And remember, it's a resolution, it's not a vote.
I understand.
You're just making sure that we have that out there, because I think we owe it to this community, to our students, for them to know we're protecting them.
Well, and that's why I think we should be able to work something out to make sure we're protecting them, not just speak about it.
Right.
And that may happen, but let's-
And so I think, I think with all respect, I think what we're talking about is more the disposition of this item at this point in time, rather than the actual, so for example, imagine that everything comes up roses and everything gets worked out, and there is no need for a resolution. There's no need to be hammering out language for a resolution. If there's still issues that we feel we would need a resolution, and there are action items that we feel would be necessary at that point in time, whether it comes back on the 7th, the 14th, or the 21st, depending on what the timing is, would depend on whatever information staff could take care of, et cetera. And then at that point in time when we see it, we could be wordsmithing and taking care, but then it would have the appropriate seven-day look, et cetera. So if that's an acceptable-
That's exactly what, yeah.
Well, and-
Mrs. Powers?
So I would prefer that we have it at a regularly scheduled board meeting. We give the full time to come up with a resolution. It's not going to take, it's going to take a little more than a few days to come up with something, to rework a traffic pattern, or whatever it is that staff is going to bring to us as potential resolutions to this issue. And to your point, Mr. Dieter Lacy, about, you know, shining a light, we can shine a light on a lot of car lines. I can tell you that right now. Murray Middle, IMS, Warfield, JBHS, Hope Sound, South Fork, Felix, Bessie Creek, all on two-lane roads, every one of them.
All of our schools have a-
So we're going, we're going to have to, this is, this is something bigger than, you know, another school. These are issues that we face at multiple schools. So I think that there is going to be, in my mind, I'm optimistic that we're going to find some sort of resolution similar to, we had a similar situation at Martin County High School with the car line and the traffic backing up and impacting businesses. And Garrett and his staff, in conjunction with the sheriff's department, found a resolution, and it works. Is it the most ideal during construction? No, it wasn't the optimum, but we wanted to be a good neighbor to the local businesses that are adjacent to Martin County High School, and it worked. And it took a little bit of time, not that much time, though, and we found a resolution. So I'm optimistic that we're going to find something that we can work with our local law enforcement and emergency services to come up with a good solution. So that's just my opinion.
Any other opinions? So the only, the only discrepancy we have here is Mrs. Powers wants us to actually be seeing, give it enough time to be doing something with, and actually be seeing a final resolution at the next board meeting. And Mrs. Deppenthaler wants, if we, if it could be done by the 14th or the 7th, to have it on, to have a special meeting on the-
Even by the 14th would be fine.
7th or 14th. So, any comments?
So if you want a resolution at the regular meeting on the 21st, it would have to be available on the 14th, anyway?
Yes, but if we wanted to address it at the budget, at a special meeting after the budget workshop on the 14th, would mean that we would have to have it done, published by the 7th, which means you would have three weeks from today in order to resolve whatever you can resolve. Otherwise, you would have four weeks. So I don't know whether you have a weigh-in on what is more reasonable, or whether I would look for a motion to how to, when you want to see this back, or what do you want to do?
Gaylord, what do you think as far as the amount of time? Do you need four weeks or three weeks to work on it?
I think that we'll try to work on this right away.
Okay. So I make a motion?
Okay.
That we have the resolution ready on the 4th, I don't know how to make the motion.
So you want to have a resolution that if at all possible, we would see it back on the 14th? And if that's not possible, we would expect to see it on the 21st?
Right, because it has to be given seven days' public notice, correct?
Correct.
So when you say impossible, what does that mean?
It means if, if she, if Mrs. Gaylord finishes everything she needs to finish, and Mrs. Deppenthaler has a resolution done by April 30th, or no, May 7th, then we would have a special meeting on the 14th. And we actually, it has to be done before then, because in order to advertise it for the meeting on the 14th, we would have to have it done by May 3rd, correct?
Okay, so I'm really at a loss now, because I thought, I heard Ms. Powers say she wanted the meeting, the resolution available at the regular meeting on the 21st.
We did. That's correct.
And we would look at it at the meeting on the 14th.
No. Mrs. Powers said that she would like a, at the workshop on May 7th, she would like a report, which I wrote on my green piece of paper.
Okay, I have that.
She would like a report that would indicate how far along the discussions were, and if anything has been resolved. Mrs. Powers prefers to see it back at the regular board meeting on the 21st, which means that the deadline to have everything done would be the 14th. Mrs. Deppenthaler is making a motion that if it could be done by the 14th, we would see it back on the 14th, which means in order to see it, to set a special meeting for the 14th, so that it could be published on the 7th. You need the advertising, the 7th is a Tuesday, you would need the advertising on the Friday prior, correct?
I have to check.
Correct?
Yes.
Which means that it would have to be done by May 3rd.
And we already have a workshop on that day. I know it is a special meeting tagged on to the workshop.
Yes, yes. So, but if it doesn't get done by May 3rd, then it wouldn't happen at the May 14th.
And that's only at the discretion of the superintendent?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. So there's a motion for Mrs. Deppenthaler, and a second by, anybody?
Can you repeat?
I will repeat the motion. You want me to repeat it? Okay. So the motion is that we will readdress this issue, that this issue will be, we will have a report at the May 7th workshop, that at the discretion of the superintendent, if the resolution is completed.
Not the resolution, but a resolution?
No, a resolution. If a resolution is completed by May 3rd, we would have a special meeting on May 14th. And if not, it would be on the agenda for May 21. That's the motion.
So, questions?
Yes?
Are we giving any direction to superintendent as to what type of resolution we're expecting?
We're giving direct-
Not resolution, written resolution, resolution to the problem.
We're giving the superintendent our list of issues that we have, and asking her to work with staff and see what she can come up with.
And TCCA?
Yes, correct.
Okay.
Mrs. Powers?
And we, like, you're making a, the motion includes, but if there is a, not a comments on paper, but if there is a resolution to the issue.
Meaning if there's a solution.
If there's a solution to the problem- There will be no special meeting and no-
Correct. That's correct.
I'll second that.
Yes.
If it's what you stated, I'll second.
Okay. Hang on, let me write that over on the side. If issue is, okay, and just to clarify that that, so how are we going to decide what, if a proper solution has been, who's going to decide that?
The superintendent will be reporting back to us at the workshop on May 7th.
Okay.
So you'll find out on May 7th at the workshop, what the progress is, et cetera, and whether that's-
And whether she needs until the 4th, beyond that?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Does that work? So I have a motion by Mrs. Deppenthaler, a second by Mr. Dieter Lacy. Anybody need the motion repeated? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
And that, opposed? And that carries unanimously. Thank you. And now we're going back to our policies.
Hey, Lori, don't ever say this meeting's going to be short.
No, it's the last time, Marcia.
What are we doing?
Don't say it.
I told her there's not a lot on this agenda.
Yeah.
It's what she always says.
Okay, hang on. So the next one we have is 8405. I believe that would be Frank. Hang on, I gotta find a pen. I had a couple things on that one.
Wait, hold on, let me get to that.
8405, on page three. Does anybody else have anything on 8405 first?
No.
Sorry. Okay. 8405, on page three, lines 134 to 137, in that area. So you see the, the language that's on page one, on line 131 that says, "Annually, the school board will review school security risk assessment findings and the recommendations of the district school safety specialist," correct?
Yes.
We had questioned at the workshop whether, at a publicly noticed school board meeting, to provide the public an opportunity to hear the school board members discuss and take action.
We just had a discussion about that.
We're asking whether that, so the question was, is that required by statute?
It is, but only, it's the F stat. It's what you always given last year with the risk assessments. So the risk assessments will be given to you to look at, at a private meeting, and then your recommend, your recommendation or my recommendation to you, and your approval of the recommendation would be at the board meeting.
So would it be more correct to say that we would be at a publicly noticed school board meeting to provide the public, to provide, to provide the public to hear the school board members take action, since we wouldn't be discussing it publicly?
Yes.
Would that be more appropriate? Does that make sense to anybody?
Yes.
I'll wait till I get there. Page five.
Page three, line number 136, deleting the words And then on page five, the language was, starting at line 188, "The superintendent shall develop administrative procedures for the prevention of violence on school grounds, including the assessment and intervention with individuals whose behavior poses a threat to, to safety." And we didn't have on campus, and you added "on campus," or somebody added "on campus."
To safety on campus.
The "on campus" was added. The "on campus" was not ever there before. So did we need the "on campus"?
I don't think we need it.
No, because, and I'm thinking-
Because it's like, what if they're on a field trip on a bus, it's not on campus. So I think it's not important that it's there.
Okay. Is that okay, Frank?
Yes.
Okay. I have to put this down here. I'm going to have to put this down here. And let's see. And that's all I had for that one. Eighty-four oh five, anybody else?
Move approval of eighty-four oh five with the change.
Second.
With a motion by Mrs. Powers, a second by Mr. Dieter Lisi, for eighty-four oh five, entitled "School Safety and Security." All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? That one carries unanimously. The next one is eighty-four oh six.
So I had one comment on this one-
Okay.
That is not in here, that is the topic of discussion, and I think it needs to be clarified that any school board employee or can call a, can notify, a call a code red, will call, you know, to, if they see suspicious behavior on campus. Because right now- Huh? Okay. I would, I kind of like it in our policy, that gives that authority to any employee to call for that, because that, that will be a, that is, that is a recommendation that's coming.
We have it on our procedures, and also on our crisis plan that it's been out there, but I don't see any problem with putting it on here either.
I don't, what do we call it? Do we call it a code red? Do we call it a lockdown? Do we call it-
Lockdown.
Call it what it is.
Okay.
Call it what it is.
Call it emergency.
Whatever the emergency is, is what it's called.
Emergency threat.
So if there's a shooter on campus, there's a shooter on campus. We don't, we don't use color.
So if you can have that for the, that isn't a substantial change, Mr. George?
No.
Okay.
Move approval with the changes to twenty, eighty-four oh six, as we just discussed.
Second.
With a motion by Mr. Dieter Lisi, and a second by Mrs. Powers, to approve eighty-four oh six, reports of suspicious activity and potential threats to schools, with the addition of that language regarding any employee being able to state an emergency. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? That carries unanimously. Eighty-four oh seven.
I have some questions about that one.
Okay.
Okay. So, let's see, how it's done here. On A, on that first page-
Mm-hmm.
It talks about abide by school board policies and consult, this is the school resource officer, will consult with and coordinate activities through school principals. And also the, the next, the last paragraph that's underlined, "With respect to matters relating to employment, school resource officers shall be responsible for their law enforcement agency, subject to agreements between the board and law enforcement agency. Activities conducted by school resource officers, which are part of the regular instructional program with schools, shall be under the direction of school principals." So my question is, are the school principals and the resource officers working closely together, and do the school principals have the authority to determine what the responsibilities at that, their particular schools are, in terms of working with students? Because I think one of the things that we said, in terms of school resource officers, that we like and we want, is they make connections with children. And those connections can be very important. If something is seen, something is heard, they will report it to them, if they feel that they have a connection with the resource officer. So I don't, I mean, I'm hoping that it, that the resource officer's not just about paper and administrative things. I'm hoping that they're part of the culture of each school, that they're representing, and that they have the relationship with the administration to do what needs to be done, you know, without anybody on the outside kind of saying, "No, you can't do this, yes, you can't." Because it really has to be, the, the culture of the school is different at every school. So I guess my question is, is somebody above that, above the school giving authority, because it's saying here, the principals are the ones.
Well, the principal would have the, the authority at the campus. I mean, the district would be in oversight. I'm not sure if that's what you're looking for.
I just want to, I just want to ensure, and I don't know if you can answer this question, Frank, I just want to ensure that the resource officers are part of the culture of the school, they're building relationships with children, so that they, children feel that they can go to them for a variety of things, and that they're, that they're not sitting in an office doing administrative work. They are supposed to be part of that school family. So I just want to ensure that that's happening. Otherwise, we're, otherwise it's not going to work the way we want to see it work, in terms of this, you know, making sure, does that make sense? Go ahead.
And I, I agree with you, to, to an extent, because I think we need to be careful that we're not putting, we want school resource officers patrolling the campus and building relationship with kids, and not sitting in an office. I do a hundred percent agree with that. But we also don't want them to be teaching classes all the time, and, you know, or, you know, a lot of things. So there is, I think we have to be really careful what we, how we word our contract with those, with, so there's contractual, and then there's the, our policy guidance that we offer, so-
Is there a contract that I could look at?
We do have a contract with our-
I'd like to see the copy of the contract.
Yeah.
If I could just add, I, I see what your concerns are, but being close to that situation as a teacher on campus, and even here, as recent as last year, I'm, I'm pleased with the balance that the resource officers, I think they do a wonderful job-
Oh, yeah.
-of what they do. They, they, they're really good, I have to tell you.
I get, I get texts, pictures, emails, all the time with our school resource officers, so I'm really happy with how, what they're doing, and, you know, not, the kids don't fear them as bad, because they are building relationships in our schools. So I, you know, obviously, I would hope that the principal would address it if it is an issue. But we also want them moving around, making sure that doors are locked, and reporting if they're not locked, and security issues-
And I'm no way saying that the resource officers aren't doing their job. I want to make sure that the resource officers are being permitted to do their job, and that they're working as a team with administrative staff and school staff.
Is it working now?
Feeding back.
Okay. Thank you. So is there a change you want to make on eighty-
I just want to say one thing. So I'm, what I'm saying is, I don't, it's not a fault with the schools themselves. I just want to make sure administration at the district, okay, is, or in the sheriff's department, is not giving, is giving the information in the way that we're talking about, is allowing that to happen. And I, I think we're all working as a team, but I, I'm sometimes hearing that outside the school itself, that other directives are being given. Does that make sense? And I can talk to you separately about that.
And can I just address, I think there might be a misunderstanding regarding, sometimes, the role of the SRO. They are not, and will not be, a dean, a disciplinarian, that is not their role. And in some of the sites, that has become something that they have implemented, and that is being stopped.
Right. I believe there's a fine line, I, I don't believe they should be a dean, absolutely. But I do think that when children or students do something inappropriate, whatever, they still should have that relationship with the kids, to be able to collaborate with the administration, not make decisions for administration. But that culture has to be there, so that children feel comfortable with, with them. Anyway, I could talk about it with Frank separately, that's just a concern. I, I don't want anything changed, I just had a concern about that.
Okay, so there's nothing to change on eighty-four oh seven, so we're looking for a motion to pass eighty-four oh seven?
Make a motion, a move approval of eighty-four oh seven as amended.
And is there a second? No amendments?
Or as, as written, yes.
Thank you.
Sorry. I second.
Presented.
A motion by Mr. Dieter Lisi, a second by Mrs. Stefanthaler, to approve eighty-four oh seven. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? That carries unanimously. Eighty-four ten, crisis intervention and response.
So I just had one comment on page two, H. It says, "Develops evacuation drills that should represent actual emergencies, including but not limited to firearm." I think it should be active shooter, because in-
Eighty-four ten?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm, I was, that was eighty-four twenty, sorry.
Okay.
I'm on eighty-four twenty.
Eighty-four ten, crisis event intervention and response. It's only one page long.
Okay, I move approval of eighty-four ten, sorry about that.
I second that.
Couldn't find page two.
Yeah. A motion by Mrs. Powers, a second by Mrs. Stefanthaler, to approve eighty-four ten, crisis event intervention and response. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? And that carries unanimously. So now we have eighty-four twenty.
Okay, that's the one.
Mrs. Powers, what do you have?
So page two, H. It says, "But not limited to firearm, natural disaster." I, I think that we don't, we don't practice drills when we find, we don't necessarily call a lockdown, or when someone has a fire, they're caught with a firearm, it's when they're shooting. So I think it should say "active shooter." And when you go down and you look at-
J says ensures drills for active shooter and hostage situations.
Right. And then it goes in like weapons, hostage, and active shooter situat-, it continues to reference active shooter, and that's the one place where it says firearm. It just doesn't, it's just not consistent.
So do you want that to say develops evacuation drills that should represent actual emergencies, and stop there? Is that what you're looking for?
I'm fine with that. I don't think we need it, because it's, "but not limited to," and it just lists potential things. I don't know that we've ever had, have we ever had a, practiced a drill for a bomb threat, like in that scenario?
Yes.
Okay.
So are you okay with taking out the "including but not limited to" line?
Yep, I'm fine with that.
And K needs an S after provides. Anything else, Mrs. Powers?
Nope. Can I ask a question about that one?
Yes.
So J on there that says ensures drills for active shooter and hostage situations shall be conducted at least as often as other emergency drills, how often are they being conducted?
Once a month.
Is it once a month?
The way it's set up is that you have to have ten fire drills, and you could actually take one of those down, and then have an active shooter drill. It's all going to change with the, if you could have four replacement or, um, coming. So now, it's either going to be ten drills for fire drills, or ten drills for active shooter drill, it hasn't been, hasn't been-
Okay.
But that's where it's looking, it's going, that you can have ten, ten, and two.
Okay.
Anything else?
Well, I can tell you that the interpretation right now by those who wrote the prior school safety bill, is that they should be occurring now, as often as other drills, which is fire drills. That is the interpretation from law enforcement. Just saying, whether it's right or wrong, it doesn't, yeah.
Okay, so I had a couple other ones. On the first page, line twenty-nine and line thirty-four. Did that need to say district school safety specialist? In other places, we have changed it from school safety specialist to district school safety specialist, so did, you didn't want it in this policy to be different, did you?
No.
Okay.
But the school, the individual school safety specialist would be participating as well.
And she's a threat, or she or he is a threat assessment team member, correct?
Yes.
Correct?
Yes.
In all the other places, we have changed it to district school safety specialist. Yes, ma'am?
Correct. This is referencing, however, the actual threat assessment team on the school site, so that would be the school's identified safety specialist, our director of school safety.
Okay, then let me get to the next one. Then on page thirty, on line thirty-four, when it says, "The superintendent, in conjunction with the school safety specialist, shall develop and revise as necessary a school safety plan to provide for the safety and welfare of the students and staff, as well as the system of emergency preparedness." Is the person who the superintendent doing this with, the person at the school, or are they doing it with Frank?
That one is the district.
That's the director.
So on line thirty-four, you want it to say district-
Correct.
-school safety specialist, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
But shouldn't-
And you're saying that on line twenty-nine, you do not want it to say that?
Why wouldn't it be his actual title of director of-
Safety and security.
Yeah.
We can, but-
What we tried to do is stay in line with the statute, instead of changing it to his title, because it-
So it says in the statute, "The superintendent, in conjunction with the school safety specialist?"
They refer to his position as, as safety specialist, school safety specialist. Our title is director of safety and security. So we, in this language, we made the decision to leave it as district school safety specialist, because of statute.
And in other policies, you were referring to Frank-
Correct.
-as the district school safety specialist.
Correct.
So I just wanted to be clear in our policy, in the cases when you want it to be Frank, that you're referring to it at the, as the same language. So my question goes back to line twenty-nine. So the active shooter situation training for each school does or does not involve you?
It should be the district there also.
Okay, thank you. And we also, I don't know why we took out policy eighty-four oh five, the reference to policy eighty-four oh five there. In line number thirty-three, we had a reference to a policy?
It's referenced in line thirty-seven, that was the recommendation at workshop.
And then, that's all I had for that one. So this is for eighty-four twenty. Is there a motion to approve eighty-four twenty with the changes?
Second.
With a motion by Mrs. Powers, and a second by Mrs. Stefanthaler, to approve eighty-four twenty, emergency management, emergency preparedness, and emergency response agencies, with the changes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? That one passes. Eighty-four sixty-two, student abuse, abandonment, and neglect.
So did anybody have comments?
Um, I had a mark on it, so let me see, try to figure out what it was.
I think this is to meet statute, really.
Thank you. Oh, this is just down at the bottom of the page, for training needs to be, we're deleting the words "teachers," and just making it instructional staff on line one eighty-four.
Yeah, that's the little X's and, that's what that means, yeah.
Yeah, but we didn't have a line for the other thing.
All right, I move approval of eighty-four sixty-two.
Second.
With a motion by Mrs. Powers, and a second by Mr. Dieter Lisi, to approve eighty-four sixty-two, student abuse, abandonment, and neglect. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? That one carries unanimously. Eighty-eight oh five, model policy on religious expression in public schools. I think that probably should just say religious expression in public schools, correct? Instead of model, model policy on.
Yes, that's fine.
Any other comments for eighty-eight oh five?
I move approval of eighty-eight oh five with the change on line four.
Second.
I have a motion by Mrs. Powers, and a second by Mrs. Stefanthaler, to approve eighty-eight oh five with the one change. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? That one carries. Eighty-one forty-one.
Oh, that's what I have, okay.
Mandatory reporting of misconduct.
I just had a question about that one.
Okay.
So, um, what page is it? Where it says requirements of disclosure, employee misconduct?
What line?
Wait a minute, let's find it there.
Let me see. You have your vote, and what line is that? Because it's all, the next, the third page, I think.
What numbers?
Eighty-one forty-one?
Line twenty-four.
Twenty-four, thank you.
Line one twenty-four?
Actually, it's in the middle of that paragraph. I, I have it, I don't want my thing three-hole punched anymore, Diane, because it's causing me problems, which is what I told you to do. Anyway, in that paragraph, "The school board superintendent, or any other district employee, may not enter into confidentiality agreement, and so on." It says that who resigns- It says that who resign in lieu of termination based in whole or part on misconduct that affects the health, safety, or welfare of the student and may not provide instructional personnel with employment references or discuss the personnel's performance with prospective employers. So my question is, do administrators know not to do that? Have they been trained and understand not to do that?
So since this language is new language, it would be, once it's approved, we would need to...
Okay, just want to make sure that's...
Train accordingly and yes.
Okay. Thank you.
I had a couple comments. On page 1, obviously on line 18, 17, 18, and 19, we would be deleting the words instructional personnel, that whole line, et cetera, and just going up to where the X is. So employees would include all employees of the district? In line, I'm going to jump a little bit. In line 33, if alleged misconduct to be reported is regarding the superintendent, the district employee shall report the alleged misconduct to, that should be school board attorney, not staff attorney. And then the language you have on line 38 that says, or school board attorney in the case of the superintendent, if applicable, should be the same language that you include in line 45. This language here. And then...
Oh, so you're saying on line 45, you want to add or school board attorney?
Or school board attorney in the case of the superintendent, comma, if applicable. The same as it says in line 38. That was what we discussed at the workshop. Then, and this links to something else now.
Wait a minute, I'm still adding this language here.
Got it? Then on line 74 through 81. 74 says, parent notification shall be provided consistent with the provisions set forth in policy 1590, 3590, 4590, including the statutory requirements that school administrators and instructional members be provided 10 days' notice before disclosure of derogatory material. So that addresses per parent notification. If you look at the actual policy of 1590, which is the next one we're going to, that policy doesn't address, doesn't say anywhere in it, parent notification. So... And we crossed out line 79 to 81. So if you read 1590, 1590 is, talks about personnel files. It talks about how we prepare an information system. We retain files, records exist, materials related to work, performance, discipline, suspension, or dismissal will be reduced to writing. Resignation or termination of employee before an investigation must be clearly indicated in a file. Employee shall have access to their file, they're open to anyone with a public records request, and they're maintained according to Florida statute 1012.31. And that's the entirety of 1590, 3590, and 4590. So there's no language in those three policies that talk about notifying parents. So I think the language that says, parent notification shall be provided consistent with the provisions set forth in those policies, that's okay. We're not violating any of those pieces that say they're open to anyone with a public records request, et cetera. But did we want to eliminate 79 to 81? That's what I'm asking.
So, does this tie your hand of notifying a parent right away? Like, this just seems like, if anything derogatory, well, what, I mean, within 10 days, is it going to be, I mean, I just think of situations that have happened that, as a parent, you're going to want to, you should know.
That's, so that piece is 10 days' notice before disclosure of the materials. But there's a difference.
Disclosure of what materials?
The materials.
The investigation?
The materials that are going into the personnel file. Personnel files are open to, you know, those, that materials. I'm just asking, what do you want to do with that?
I think it needs to reference the personnel file, not just...
And Mrs. Roberts, I'm trying to recall at the workshop, what we discussed is to the why that was stricken. And I think the piece was because this was tying to having to provide notification in writing where oftentimes the notification might not be...
So should we just say the Martin County School District shall notify the parent of a student who was subjected to or affected by such misconduct? And do it that way? And just take out the in writing part? I mean, I don't know what the intent is here, or do we want to...
I think our discussion at the last workshop was is that it would be removed completely. I don't...
Diane, do you have the back and forth text?
Because it says, doesn't it say it in the paragraph right above it?
No, that's something different.
I think her question is, is in 1590, 3590, and 4590, it's not addressing that in those policies.
I think it needs to be that Martin County School District shall notify, shall immediately notify the parent of a student who was subjected to or affected by, I don't think there's anything wrong with adding that back in without the in writing.
Because it's, well, it says it in the first paragraph under, where it says parent notification of alleged misconduct. That's Florida statute.
But that's within 30 days that you're going to...
That we're going to notify the parent in writing.
Yeah, so within 30 days, but like, but they will immediately be notified, not in writing.
Right. Right, we're going to notify the parent, but within 30 days, there has to be written notification.
Yeah. So that sentence, so I don't understand what this is, because that sentence at the workshop was written in, and then it's showing up here as typed in, but then crossed out.
So put it back in.
We would have to go back and listen to why, I don't have any recollection of the discussion about why it was stricken or if it was in and if we removed it out.
Can we just take this one and bring it back next time for the first read next time?
Sure, we can do that.
So, Ms. Roberts, just a comment on that? That's what we're going to do. I do think that we should leave in the blue that's stricken about notifying parents. So the 30-day thing, I know is in statute, they have to respond.
We don't have blue. We don't have color.
Oh. So it would be line 79 to 81.
Yeah, okay.
Except I think it should remove writing and just say shall immediately notify the parent of a student who was subjected to. Because they're going to hopefully immediately notify them by phone.
Well, and I don't even care if we don't say immediately. I don't even care if it says...
We're going to notify.
I don't even care if it says...
She'll notify.
I do.
So immediately means what do you?
Like, like right now? As soon as they know it happened and a child has been put in a situation that they, it's, it's not, we're going to wait and maybe, you know, wait three days till we investigate it. It has to be...
Shall notify the parent of a student who is...
Pretty, I don't mean that, like, within minutes, I just mean, if you know a child has been adversely affected.
You say immediately, some people think, they didn't call me in five minutes.
I think you should go back and listen to the tape, because we already, we had a discussion about that, and I'd like to know what the discussion, you know, why we even did that in the first place. We spent some time on that. So can we bring it back?
I don't even remember, like...
There must be something that was said, you know?
I don't remember this blue part.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I think we can bring it back.
Okay, wait a minute. I found my piece of paper.
I just don't want it to be interpreted that we can wait 30 days, and I'm not saying that, or there to be some sort of...
They would be notified, but I would have a problem, immediately to some people means like right this minute.
Right.
Now, if you're dealing with a situation on safety of a student right now, I may not be able to do it right this hot minute, and that's what some people would expect. Because sometimes we deal with situations where...
But if there is some, in certain cases, like misconduct involving in or soliciting sexual, romantic, lewd, as a parent, if a teacher is being investigated and my child is involved, I would be upset if you waited until you investigated three days later. That, I mean, so...
It's not, it won't, I guarantee you. We notify DCF and the sheriff right away.
So can we take a motion?
Well, if we can notify DCF and the sheriff, then we can notify the parent at the same time.
Can we have a motion to move the first read to a time certain of May 21, 2019?
Yes, second.
So I have a motion by Mr. Dieter Lisi and a second by Mrs. Powers to move policy number 8141 to a first read at time certain of May 21, 2019. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? That carries 5-0. And then the last ones we have are the three.
1901.
1590, 3590, and 4590.
The second reading, those are the second reading lines?
No, it's the first read.
15?
No, I show 12, 13, 32, 13, and 42, 13.
Yeah.
Those are the ones that we took off? What do you have?
I know, I don't have that, what you were talking about.
These.
No.
No, 12, 13, 32, 13.
We don't have those on, well, I see, wait, no, I see 15. Those, the last ones, 1901, those were taken off.
Oh, okay.
So 1590 is, yeah.
Or done. Oh, 1590, there we go.
1590, 3590, and 4590.
So I move approval of 1590.
3590 and 4590.
3590 and 4590.
My second, then.
I have a motion by Mrs. Powers and a second by Mrs. Steffenthaler to move forward the three policies, 1590, 3590, and 4590 entitled personnel file. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? And that carries unanimously. And that's all the policies. Now we're moving to a public hearing, which is the second and final read of 1430.01, 3430.01, and 4430.01, which deal with FMLA leave. Mrs...
So do we have anybody out there?
Dr. White, can you check and make sure there's nobody outside who wants to say anything during our public hearing?
Okay, so I move approval of 1430.01, 3430.01, and 4430.01.
My second, then.
A motion by Mrs. Powers, a second by Mrs. Steffenthaler to approve 1430.01, 3430.01, and 4430.01. And seeing nobody from the public who wants to say anything? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? So that carries unanimously. We now have open to the board. Mr. Anderson, you have anything?
No, ma'am.
Mr. Dieter Lisi, do you have anything?
No, ma'am.
Mrs. Steffenthaler, do you have anything?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Just very quickly, I attended the music in our school concert, the tail end of it, actually. It was an amazing performance by our bands and forces, and I just really love that students, high school students stand up and give standing ovations to elementary students, and it's just very heartwarming to see that. And then, in the end, everybody stands up to give standing ovations to each other. But it was a really wonderful night, and I appreciate what Mr. Flanagan does to coordinate that and all the teachers, students, and parents. I attended Tall, I went to Tallahassee for new school board member training and a day in the legislature. I was able to meet with several senators, met with FSBA members, and we were able to share our concerns. I did have the opportunity with Mrs. Roberts to meet with Mary Lynn Magar, and we did, you know, express concerns there or issues that we would hope that she would be supporting. I also attended the Kyle Conrad Track Meet. I want to thank all the coaches, teachers, administration for volunteering their time. I want to thank Martin County High School staff for all they do to prep that area for the track meet. And I congratulate the students and thank the parents and families for their support. I also had the opportunity to speak to Mr. and Mrs. Conrad that day, and of course, we appreciate their support. I recently had the opportunity to visit Anderson Middle School, the Avid program there. I want to thank Mrs. White for coordinating that and attending that with me. And I did take the Avid training recently, so this really kind of gave me more of an in-depth understanding of the program. I want to thank Kristen Register, who was the Avid teacher. She allowed us to observe and explained the program to us, or to me. And I did appreciate her passion for the program. I want to thank Mr. Aiken and Mr. Flanagan for giving me a tour of AMS, introducing me to staff and students, and for sharing their knowledge and experience. AMS seems to have a very positive culture, and there was a great rapport between teachers, students, and administrators, and that was, that was great to see. I also saw their sort of Food for Families or their backpack program, where they have backpacks ready to go on Fridays with volunteers, and they have a room filled with food so that the students can take home food on Fridays, those that don't have it at home. I would also like to request that we begin to work on the need to do, to start work on appointed superintendent, which is coming up, you know, even though we think we have a lot of time, sometimes we don't. It was suggested that we begin by changing or adding the wording, and we may have already done this, so correct me if I'm wrong, in our policies, wherever it says administrator, that we, we put the word superintendent in policies wherever it states administrator, where it means superintendent. And also, we need to discuss who we might be working with in order to help us with this process. I know some counties that are doing this have already contracted with FSBA to do this. So we need to decide whether we're going to work with FSBA or an outside consulting firm, if we're going to need to do either one of those things. But I think it's important that we begin this process. And it was also suggested that we use back-to-school events to survey parents and communities so they feel included in this process or are included in this process. So I just want to suggest that we begin moving forward with that. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Mrs. Powers?
So the appointed superintendent was also on my list. I think that we need to, whatever we need to do, if we're going to have to go out to bid for a search company, or I don't know what that dollar amount looks like, I guess we need to get some more information, but we need to start. I know, depending on the plan that the board has, if it means community events, if it means a guiding committee, if it means, you know, we just need to decide as a board what it's going to look like and what our search is going to look like. So I would like to ask that someone, staff, come back to us with our next steps. Do we need to bid it? What's our threshold? Can we just pick someone? So I just kind of want to understand that. And maybe we can have a report from Justin at our workshop and tell us kind of what we need to do and if we need to do something and have some consensus to put something on the next agenda. That would be great. I know that there has been a lot of discussion about best and brightest and the R. I just want to clarify for the record, and I guess Audra would probably be the one that would answer, that there was some sort of processing fee that...
I think what she's referring to is, and the statute for best and brightest actually says in it, in the award piece for best and brightest, it does talk about that they are awarded best and brightest and that the, it's a normal, I forget what the exact wording is, I did pull it up, that the normal payroll tax, et cetera, is taking, is the responsibility of the employee. There have been, I...
of the employee. There have been, I believe there's one district that I know of.
Yes, because I would like it for the record that explaining exactly how that, how it worked and why we did what we did.
Yes, ma'am.
For everyone to come back and listen.
So it was brought to my attention that someone said there were other districts that paid the payroll, the employee's share of Social Security and Medicare. Those are the only payroll taxes we're talking about, is the employee, employers, excuse me, employer's share of the Social Security and Medicare, that there were other districts that were doing that. We only located one that we became aware of, and that is Okeechobee. The Okeechobee School District did pay the employer's share from their own funds and not from the best and brightest allocation. The grant application that has been done by this district for a number of years and was mirrored this year, identically to all past years that I could find. It took the allocation per teacher and it backed out that payroll tax and netted it so that you had a net amount for bonus, and then the Social Security at six point two percent and the Medicare at one point four five percent. And so the total amount was reduced by that. That has been the practice of this district. That contribution for employer taxes goes into the employee's Social Security pot of money that is there for their retirement. It is not something that is kept by the district. There is no processing fee maintained by the district in any way. Like all grants of this district, and when I say all grants, I mean all grants, any grant that pays any type of wage in this district also absorbs the related payroll taxes and other fees. We didn't, we, as a district, have always, for whatever reason, and I don't know why, but again, I mirrored your past practice, we've always picked up the worker's comp and not charged that back in the best and the brightest grant. That gets picked up from local dollars above and beyond. Don't know why, but again, I mirrored past practice of all the years you've done best and the brightest. We only in the application showed the salary, the Social Security and Medicare portion, and nothing more. And those contributions are to the Social Security Trust Fund. They are not maintained here in this district. They are immediately upon payroll processing remitted to the Internal Revenue Service slash Social Security Administration on behalf of the employee, along with their own share, because there's two halves to Social Security always, the half that's paid by the employer and the half that's paid by the employee. Both are gathered and remitted at the end of a payroll period to the Internal Revenue Service in our normal tax deposit. So none, no dollars are ever retained by this district in any way. They are deposited on behalf of the employee, and whether it's Title I, IDEA, Title II, any other grant we do, if we pay a salary, the payroll taxes for the employer are part of the grant. If we were to not pay those in the grant, they would have to come out of the, set aside for raises and other things that are set aside for the year. And so that pot of money has never been considered to be touched, and there was no conscious decision to do something to the teachers or to reduce their allocation in some way. It was just, again, past practice was followed, exactly the same as every grant in the district and every year's best and the brightest that I was able to research and find. So I wanted to make sure that the public was aware. The board didn't make a conscious decision to do that specifically, just past practice was followed, and also, there's only one other district that we were able to find in the state that didn't do as we do. All the other districts did do exactly as we do. Does that help you?
I appreciate the explanation.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted it on the record.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. I got it via email, but I think it's important because there's a lot of things, misinformation, I think swirling around that, you know, I think that was, I think sometimes it's easier to see it in writing and hear it than maybe thinking. So one other thing, so the building purchase, I guess, I spoke to the superintendent on Friday, but I'm kind of looking forward to an update on the things that we ask for moving forward, so we'll get that at May seventh?
Correct.
And I also asked that we have a safety and security meeting.
Yes, I have that written down.
So that we can, the new board members can look over what we, where we are and where we're going.
And I have that scheduled for after the legislative session so that we know whatever new comes from.
New stuff.
Okay.
And I do want to address, there was a comment made, a public comment about House Bill seventy thirty, and there is nothing in House Bill seventy thirty that requires that teachers carry guns. It is a local decision, a local decision made by local school boards whether they would like to offer the opportunity for teachers to volunteer, and just because a teacher volunteers doesn't mean a teacher will get to carry a gun, if a school district does elect to do that. We always complain about local control, local control, but then when it's given to us, somehow it turns into this, the only thing in seventy thirty that anybody's talking about is arming teachers. And there are so many good things, and it does not require any school district in the state of Florida to arm teachers. And, you know, this school district has, this school board has made a decision, and unless it comes before us again, we're not changing anything. So, just, the talking points that are out there, again, back to misinformation, that is misinformation. So I just want to clarify that, because, you know, a lot of people talk about guns in our schools, that, oh, you know how bad it is? Well, seventeen dead people are worse. So I just think that that's a local decision made by local school boards. If they choose to do that, that's their business, that's their community, that's, whatever their constituents will tolerate. Here in Martin County, we've made that decision.
Thank you. I'd like to congratulate the students and families that were honored at the Golden Hearts Heart Awards. Also congratulate the SPAM Team One Eighty for winning at the South Florida Regionals where they were partnered with Children of the Swamp, some of their old favorites, and they are getting ready to go to Houston to compete there. Thank the Environmental Studies Center for the Open House and the Red Door Dedication on April sixth. Congratulate the Jensen Beach High School seniors, and thanks to the community for the generous scholarships on April eighth that totaled over half a million dollars. And congratulations to the Martin County High School for winning the constitutional competition, and kudos to South Fork and Jensen Beach for the robust discussions on the authority over immigration, which was rather interesting, and they do actually know all their little pieces of the Constitution. Remind my fellow board members that the Book Bowl is April twenty-fifth. There is a Citrus Grove Elementary Art Exhibit at the Elliott Museum on April twenty-fifth, and on Tuesday, April thirtieth, from five to eight, at the Treasure Coast Mall, there's an art and music event that is being run by the Jensen Beach Chamber that showcases the artistic and musical talents of our Jensen Beach Schools.
What date was that, Ms. Roberts?
And that's April thirtieth, from five to eight. And that's all I had. Madam Superintendent, you have anything else?
No, I'm good to go. Thank you.
Okay, so is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
A motion by Mr., no, that...
Yeah, that's many, Dieter Lisi.
Right. So, any opposed? No? Okay. So that passes unanimously with a motion by Mr. Dieter Lisi, a second by Mrs. Steffenthaler, and we are now adjourned at eight-thirty.